All right, are we on the air?
Uh, hold on please. And we're streaming, take it away.
All right, call to order, the Wednesday, July 8th, 2020, meeting of the Victorian Village Commission. The next monthly business meeting is at noon, Wednesday, July 29th, 2020. It will be, that meeting will be conducted virtually via WebEx, via a platform similar to the one you're on now. The next commission hearing will be at four o'clock PM Wednesday, August 12th, 2020. Again, a virtual hearing to be held via WebEx. Uh, who, uh, the staff who will be participating, please state your names.
Sarah Medwick, Assistant Historic Preservation Officer.
Ashley Rinn, Assistant Historic Preservation Officer.
Is that it? You both swear or affirm, uh, the testimony you'll give tonight is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Very well, thank you. Uh, let's all introduce ourselves, uh, as commissioners. Somebody. Know that Mr. Hissam is here.
I'm sorry, I didn't unmute myself.
Jeffrey Hissam is here, all right. Uh, is Sarah here? No, it's Sarah. Is Erin here?
Yes.
Erin Moriarty is here, is Liesel Cohtimer here?
I'm here.
All right, un-muted, and is John Conyers here?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Jack Decker is here, so we have a full house. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the Wednesday, June 10th, 2020 meeting?
So moved.
It's Conyers' motion?
Second.
Uh, second Moriarty? All right, I need to do a roll call, Moriarty.
Next.
Cohtimer?
Yes.
Conyers?
Yes.
Hissam? Jeff? Decker?
Hi.
Ford, uh, zero one. Motion passes. Uh, do we have a public forum today?
No.
All right, uh, I do want to point out, we need to cram elect officers into new business at the end of this, if we can. Uh, do we have a motion to enter the staff approvals onto the record?
So moved.
Is that, uh, motion Moriarty, do we have a second?
Second.
Hissam, seconds. Discussion. All in favor? Moriarty?
Yes.
Cohtimer?
Yes.
Conyers?
Yes.
Hissam?
Yes.
Decker, yes. Passes five, nothing. Okay. Staff, what is first on our agenda?
So we start with item three, uh, the first two were moved to staff approval. Item three is 1210 Highland Street. Across last month at. And this is now an action item. So this is to enclose a nonhistoric rear porch. Uh, modify an existing first floor window into a single full light door with a transom. This was originally a French door proposed last month. Um, the porch is planned to have simple columns and a metal handrail that is taking into consideration the comments of the commissioners from last month. And they're modifying the second story to remove the existing windows and replace two windows matching the existing incise and spacing. And then installing lights at both entryways on the first and second floor. So items for discussion, um, the existing rear porch is nonhistoric. And the applicable standards here would be 3116.11, which is standards for alteration. Um, contemporary design for alteration to a property shall not be discouraged when such alteration does not destroy significant historical, architectural or cultural material. And its design is compatible with the size, scale, color, material and character of the property, its environment and surrounding contributing properties. And that whenever possible, a new addition or alteration shall be accomplished so that its future removal will not impair the essential form and integrity of the structure. Uh, staff recommends approval as submitted.
Is there applicant here?
Good question.
All right, who are you?
Amy Lauerhouse with Lauerhouse Architecture.
All right, there you are, uh, raise your hand, do you swear affirm the testimony you will give today is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Do you have anything to add?
Nope, that was a good summary.
Discussion. Looks to me like they did what we suggested, anybody have any different opinions?
I think it looks better than the way it looks now.
Ditto, any, any other discussion?
Nope.
Ready for a motion? Are we?
Yes, sir.
Have we a motion to approve as submitted from someone?
Motion is submitted.
Uh, I guess that's Hissam because he was louder, do we have a second? Second, Conyers. Further discussion. All right, uh, Moriarty?
Yes.
Cohtimer?
Yes.
Conyers?
Yes.
Hissam?
Yes.
Deckers, yes, motion passes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, next please.
All right, next, 73 Hunter. This is to add a three and a half foot high fence to be 12.5 feet long between the house and the existing fence. Fence would start just behind the existing door per the submitted site plans. Um, staff will note that shadow box fences are generally not considered appropriate. Um, and that at the business meeting, the commissioners suggested possibly adding mesh. Standards here are the standards for site improvements, uh, which is that landscaping, parking, utility, service areas, walkways. Should be compatible to each other and to the subject building or structure, as well as adjacent contributing properties, open spaces in the overall environment. Um, and then be. Staff recommends approving the application as submitted with the clarification that the new fencing should either match the existing. Or be consistent with the guidelines and previously approved Victorian Village fences, which are horizontal or vertical wood board.
Do we have an applicant?
Yes.
Who is that?
Uh, Derek Abbott.
Derek Abbott, raise your hand please. Swear affirm the testimony you will give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Very good, do you have anything to add to what staff has presented?
Um, no, actually that is perfect, we will, um, amend it to get rid of the shadow box and, um, replicate the version that our side fencing is right now.
Do you, are you, what's the height of the interior fencing?
I think it was three and a half.
Got it. Discussion. Any?
Um, I still think it's weird. Still proposing the fence within the fence, right, am I right?
Yes, the, the reasoning behind that is that, um, our current door faces out into that, um, where the slate slabs are.
Um, yeah.
Ideally, when we're currently letting our dog out, our front wrought iron fence, straight to the sidewalk, is older, it's going to need to be replaced at some point. So he's been able to get under that multiple times. And we would prefer that he not be able to get all the way to pretty much the sidewalk portion.
So this fence goes in front of your door though, right?
No, it would go behind the front door, so where in the photos, where the grass, where the grass begins.
Is there a way that you could like plant shrubs in front of it or something? Cause I still think it's weird to have a fence behind a fence.
Well, I don't think that the shrubs would keep him away from getting to, all the way to the sidewalk.
No, 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 like put in this fence, but. You know, one foot in front of it.
Oh, okay.
In front of the fence, so when you look at the sidewalk, it's, it's.
Okay, so you see the shrubs and then the fence?
And so you're not really seeing the fence?
Yeah, I think certainly.
Kind of weird.
Probably, I mean, I certainly understand that, um.
I don't know if there's room for it or not, but I just think when you look beyond a wrought iron fence and see. Uh, same plane, a wooden fence is weird.
I mean, I didn't know, we're also open to the idea of making it a wrought iron one as opposed to a wooden one as well. Um, I didn't know if that would make any kind of difference from an approval standpoint.
I don't.
A lot more expensive, but it would look a lot better.
I've just.
I haven't gotten like estimates or anything on that yet, but I just didn't know.
I just think, uh, the fortress of a double layer fence is a strange, strange look from the street. Um, and it doesn't look, it doesn't look. Right, um, and so if there was a way that you could. Just not have the fence so noticeable. Or. Like if you did, now I'm designing it, but like if you did, uh. The fence that's functional with, you had like sort of a cute gate. And you did shrubs in front of the fence and then if the fence was painted, gate was painted green, so it's just sort of like a green garden.
Yeah, so kind of, yeah, I mean, we're definitely open to that, absolutely.
I'd be okay with that if it was more of like a garden gate.
Yeah, we could definitely do that, I mean.
That's all.
Liesel, you want to, Liesel, you want to make a motion?
Um. So basically there's, just to clarify, they're submitting an application and they're open to what the materiality is?
Yeah, if we want to go in and change what the, like, the material we have in there, I think is the same, but it would just be the style of how it's actually built. Um, yeah. From the shadow box into the, um, I think it's just a picket style on that side, I'm not entirely sure what the actual side of it is.
So I would say approve as submitted, um. But. Paint or put shrubs in, on the street side of the section, of the sections that are four foot nine inches on either side. And paint the gate. Um. Disappear.
And I think as submitted, it was for shadow box, so you need to change it to.
Yeah.
The style of fence to also, I think.
So the style of fence can be just a. What is that, dog ear fence? Not shadow box.
We're, we're looking for the right term for this, uh, fence to match the, uh, outside fence in the, in the, uh.
It's a dog ear fence. Dog ear picket fence.
All right, I think that's the motion, do we understand what it is, everybody?
Yep.
Do we have a, uh, motion by Cohtimer, do we have a second?
Second.
Further discussion. All in fa, oh, can't do that. Uh, Moriarty? Yea or nay? Uh, Cohtimer?
Yes.
Yes, Cohtimer, yea or nay?
Yes.
Conyers?
Yes.
Hissam?
Yes.
Decker, yes, motion passes, there you go, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Next is item five, which is 689 North High Street. This is to install new exterior illuminated wall sign measuring three feet six inches by two foot six inches per submitted documentation. And to install a new exterior illuminated projecting sign measured two, two foot five inch by 15 feet 10 inch. With, uh, lights, uh, that are gooseneck lights with a blue gold color scheme. And so you all saw this last month as well, or rather at the business meeting, and you requested a detailed section drawing. And the applicant would submit a section drawing that's in the materials. Uh, the short north design guidelines here for signage, uh, it states that the sign should be, not obscure any architectural elements. The installation of a sign must be reversible and cannot permanently alter or damage historic building materials. It states that the maximum allowable area for a wall sign that'll be supported is 25 square feet. Um, and that pedestrian oriented signage is preferred.
Exactly, could you, could you pull up that section? Thank you.
There you go. Projected that section drawing onto the photograph there, uh, to, to assist, and so staff recommends approving the application for the installation of wall and blade signs. The gooseneck lights, but with the wall sign reduced to 25 square feet.
What is the, uh, size of the cur, I'm sorry, I lost my audio for a second. What's the size of the proposed, uh, sign on the storefront?
So the wall sign, it says, is 3.6 by two foot six inches, which is 8.75 square feet. Also, I did want to mention that, uh, at the meeting last month, y'all were concerned about sign competition and stated that it was unusual to allow two signs.
Right. Do we have an applicant?
Yes.
Mr. Holtzberry, is that you?
Correct.
Do you, uh, raise your hand please, you swear affirm the testimony you will give today is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Very well, what have you to add?
Um, so I did go out and take some new pictures of the building because the facade is finished now. Um, and basically that, that area has been set out on the wall to be. That size that we have proposed here, um, if you can see from some of the pictures, there's a wood there right now where the awning used to be. Um. So can we see some pictures? Yeah, so that, that's on the new storefront there that you're seeing right now. And there is one, I believe, showing just the, yeah, so you see where the wood is at right now? That was where the awning was covered up and the windows were brought out, so that entire area was originally planned. Um, when the facade rebuild was approved to have that sign there. So right now it's just wood, so if we make the sign smaller. I'm not real sure what they're gonna do to cover that wood up that's just exposed right now. And just looking at like some of the other, um, businesses nearby, I saw Max, which is a right down, uh, I think it's just to the right here of this photo. Um, they have a projecting sign and a wall sign, um, so, and I believe, um. The one across the street does as well, Monarch, so there's certainly some ones with a wall sign and a projecting sign. Did we okay the brick at the bottom of that? Was that brick existing? I'm not exactly sure, uh, that would be, I don't know if, if someone on the staff would know or. So if that, if that car would move, we would see, because if it was original, it would have turned back in. If it's, it's going to be flush with a door. And I don't remember, I never remember being any new brick.
Underneath the windows, it was brick.
That kind of brick?
Yeah, I'm the manager there, I've been there, uh, almost 15 years, that was brick completely underneath the windows, the only thing it really changed was the, uh, we extended that wall out.
You need to be sworn in. Yeah, you need to swear in.
Right, okay, who's there, is that Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Please raise your hand.
I'll turn them. Oh, oh. Sorry, I'm trying to.
Are you driving while you're talking here? Do you swear? Okay, do you swear affirm the testimony you will give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
All right, is this brick that we're seeing in this photograph, this red brick, the same brick that was there before?
Yeah, it never got touched during the change.
It is, it's in Google, street view.
Okay.
If you had a choice. Between a regulation. Uh, streak facing sign. And a blade sign or a large. Uh, storefront sign without a blade sign, which would you prefer?
The wall, the one.
The big wall.
We've spent, yeah, we've spent considerable amount of money right now, we've spent 30,000 on a website, we're completely rebranded. And this is, you know, we're investing a lot of money into the short north neighborhood, so we would really, uh, it goes along with everything that we're pushing right now. As far as, um, basically reinvigorating our whole store.
What is the rest, anybody else have an opinion on this?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. Uh, my question is, uh, which drawing is showing the placement of the goose light lamps above the wall sign? Because page one and page two seems to be showing different locations. Uh, if you match the light up with the letters of the sign underneath it, so, uh, something to be potentially measured out. And then, um, the size of the sign, I was kind of wondering if we can't just. You know, reduce the wall sign to 25 square feet, but have the background be the same navy blue, I don't really know.
It loses its power at that point, I mean, the sign then will look very, very small. And we have, I mean, across the street, we have neon signs, we have signs of every different type. But, you know, so we're just trying to basically improve the whole look of our store and the short north with this sign.
And, and I'd like to comment too on that.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Who's that?
Um, this is Oliver, so.
Okay.
The Alexander's Jewelers, the actual graphics lettering would probably be pretty close to 25 square feet. The, the square footage we're talking about is for the entire blue, um, panel too. So if you look at just the Alexander's Jewelers graphics, it's probably pretty close to 25 square feet there.
Did staff measure that right now?
What's that, Erin?
What, I, what did staff previously say it was measured at?
I think they gave us the blade sign dimensions, do we know what the dimensions of the proposed wall sign are?
Approximately 38 square feet.
Eight?
Thirty eight.
Thirty eight.
And so that is for the entire blue, including the entire blue background panel.
I make, uh, just talk about this for a second, so. What this, this is kind of a weird window storefront where there's not really like. Essentially like a transom window like you see in, um, Max next door. Um, it kind of makes sense to me, like, if rather than us being a flat panel. Of blue, however it is, flush, that it was more of a. You know, if it had some molding to it, like, like it, you know, the bottom of, of Max, so it looked more architectural. At, or, you know, responded to the, the window, um, moldings or something. And then the sign gets laid in there slightly smaller than it is. Showed, and then, so then it's really architecturally sort of molded designed paneling. And then no matter who comes in, say Alexander's Jewelers. Moves, that it's a building that looks good, and then. That the lettering can be the sign, the size of the sign, the 25 square feet.
Yep, I agree with that.
So let's just say the letters are.
I'm sorry, can you say that again, you cut out for me a little bit there.
So rather than having a flat, flat panel that's that blue.
Mm-hmm.
Say ignore the sign, forget about the sign for a second, and. Make that panel, give it some architectural molding that responds to the, the window mullions. And makes it look. Less of a sign and more of architecture that's part of the building. Then, after you get the, you know, the transom level of the building figured out and designed. Then you lay on a sign that, you lay on 25 square feet of lettering over that, so it's not just a flat panel. Cause if you look at like the base of Max, there's some articulation to those panels. And I feel like it needs something, whether it looks like blanked out windows or something at the top level of your windows.
Are you suggesting a frame around this thing, kind of like in the same dimension as the window mullions?
Yes.
Uh, and so it looks like there's an additional mullion separating the sign from the windows.
Yeah.
And from the brick. And then we'll call the sign the lettering that's in the middle of this.
Yes.
And the lettering is not to be larger than 25 square feet?
Yes.
And I can confirm with my designer who I just talked to, that lettering on the wall sign is only 18 square feet. It's for just the lettering.
Yeah, I think if you look at, at least on street view, the storefront to the left, the south, the blue molding. I think that is kind of what we're talking about, having a little bit more molding on the top and the bottom, and then allowing the signage to act as those transom windows.
Yeah, I just don't know how we would accomplish that, like how we would, I don't know what we would do to make it look like windows up there or.
No, and it's never been windows, so I don't understand that.
I don't think she's, the, the terminology is, is you're basically trying to make it look like a finished panel. So I have, uh, a railing and it can be spindles, or it can be a panel with a finished piece. Which is framing that solid piece.
But the simplest way to do it is I, the simplest way to do it as I understand it is just to put a frame around the sign. So instead of a flat. Object, it's a, it's got a frame around it and the dimensions of the frame are approximately the same as the window mullions. Is, I think that's what we're talking about, but I don't understand why that can't be done. Is there something I'm missing?
I, I'm just, I guess I'm just not understanding the frame you guys are talking about. Like, uh, do you, are you trying to make it look like the window mullions are extending up? Into that area or?
Well.
No.
I think we're trying to make it look finished off.
That's exactly it, Jack. So the mill, the mullions stop at the bottom of the sign, but there's a finished piece all around the. Edge of that sign to make it look like a finished piece sitting on top of that. Okay, so, I mean, I could, yeah, we can just put some framework around it, I don't see, I mean, I don't think that would be a big deal for us.
All right.
Around the, the edges of it, on the right, left and top of it, that's what you're talking about.
And bottom.
And bottom, okay.
And staff can work with you to, to create that as well, to help with some guidance if you need it, it sounds like a rectangle around the sign is what y'all are looking for.
Yeah, and I don't know if you would want to make it black or if you'd want us to make it like the metallic color we're doing with the letters or.
Metallic's probably wrong, I think black would look all right. What do you think, fellow commissioners?
I think tone on tone.
Why did you mix a navy with a black? When black's not associated with any marketing for the company?
No, I, if you, I was just about to say, I think it should be tonal, meaning tone on tone, you see the relief.
I agree with that.
But it's all the same color.
Yeah.
All right. Do we, have we? All right. Have we figured this out? Are we ready for a motion?
Um, is this something significant enough to be able to see again or are you thinking that this is?
I would think that if we do this, we can either let a subcommittee or staff figure out the details, but I think having a, we're pretty specific about the dimensions of the frame, the color, uh, which signs are which. I think there's some ambiguity about where the lights are, but there needs to be because the lights need to be mounted in mortar.
Okay.
Uh, as long as they're evenly spaced, I don't know that it makes a difference, does it? So motion time, somebody.
We're only, we're talking about a motion just for a wall sign then. We're not considering the blade sign at all.
Is that, I thought we were gonna allow the projecting sign as well.
Uh, my initial intention was uh not to, but I'm just one commissioner. If we look at this sign as really only being eighteen or twenty-five square feet, what do the rest of the commissioners think about a blade sign?
Well, I think when you started the discussion, Jack, you asked, do you want a wall sign or a blade sign? And they said, we want a wall sign.
Yeah, but I don't know why he asked that, to be frank. Like, they're asking for both.
And it's. Yeah, I didn't hijack this, so I just want to make sure I didn't hijack this. So what is the sense of the commissioners about allowing both signs?
So are we gonna let every, every applicant do that? I mean, we're setting a precedent here. It's not an awning.
Could I just say, if you refer to the short north guidelines, each uh, I can't, I'm not reading it, but each uh tenant is allowed one wall sign and either one uh projecting sign or canopy sign. So it's in the guidelines allowed.
It's permissible under the guidelines.
Yes.
Well, there we are.
Full of sign of square foot can't exceed twenty-five square feet, correct Connie?
For the wall sign and twelve for the projecting.
Okay, thank you.
And our projecting is under twelve and we're planning on making the lettering there twenty-five square feet and we don't have a canopy.
Yeah, the lettering certainly shouldn't be any bigger than the drawing to get up to twenty-five square feet if it's eighteen there.
Yeah.
All right, do we have a motion? We can make it A and B so we can vote separately on both signs and A would be the wall sign.
Right. I'll go ahead and make a motion. For item A, um, from item A, which is the wall sign, uh approved uh as submitted, given the following changes. That clarification or reduction in the overall size to be the twenty-five square foot uh restriction uh is achieved. Um, a revision to the sign to uh accomplish uh a more integrated approach uh utilizing um molding or some kind of architectural feature uh to better integrate it into the elevation. Um, and then the goose necks will be um evenly spaced and all installation um to be uh within the mortar. Did I miss anything?
Point of clarification, when you say it's supposed to be twenty-five square feet, are you saying the lettering? Or are you saying we have to take the whole thing down from what's proposed?
It seems like, i- it seems like the entire sign itself, the sign portion of it would be the twenty-five square foot, given being very prescriptive, but the architectural elements of that could be the same material tone on tone. But those are more building facade elements versus sign elements.
Does anyone understand what we're, I'm not sure what, that I understand.
So what he's saying, what he's saying is basically the background of this sign would become an architectural element and then the sign itself would just be the lettering, which is eighteen square feet right now.
Cool. Okay. With that clarification, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
And then one, one item guys, yes, one item is, this is gonna be reviewed by a, a subcommittee. I think that I would want that reviewed by a subcommittee, just only because of the ambiguity of what's been talked about.
And who volunteers for the subcommittee?
I would.
That's Hissam and Moriarty? So the motion's amended for Hissam and Moriarty to be on a subcommittee to review the revisions. Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, further discussion. Okay, in favor or against Moriarty?
Yes.
That's yes?
Yes.
Kotheimer?
Yes.
Conyers?
Yes.
Hissam?
Yes.
Decker, yes, motion passes. Part B, I guess would be the blade sign as uh proposed, right? Need a motion?
Just real quick, the um fastenings for the blade sign should be installed into the mortar and not the brick.
I was gonna say that, yeah.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
Um, to approve that submitted? Not with. See.
Your, your audio is breaking up. I think you're trying to say approve is submitted with the addendum that the sign is to be anchored in the mortar, not the brick. Is that what you said?
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Further discussion, uh, uh, Hissam was first to second it. Further discussion, all in favor. Oh, no, uh Moriarty.
Yes.
Ki- Kotheimer?
Yes.
Conyers?
Yeah.
Hissam?
Yes.
Decker, yes. All right, there you go. So you need to uh submit revised drawings for how that uh exactly what you're going to do with your uh wall sign and then they will be sent to the subcommittee and you will get a final answer.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good day.
You too.
What's next?
Next is item six at nine thirty-six Highland Street. This is to replace textured aluminum siding for a single unit with new James Hardy fiber cement siding and trim. Upset fisher gutters and downstalls would be replaced. New siding would be evening blue with arctic white trim. Um, at the business meeting, commissioners provided the feedback that they needed clarification regarding how the trim will be added to the windows above the garage and requested exposure specs of both the existing and proposed new feed, new siding. Um, that feedback was provided to the applicant. The Victorian Village guidelines state that new material should duplicate the size, shape and texture of the original material as closely as possible and that siding spots wider than four inches with rare exceptions are, are not appropriate. Um, and the applicable code is three one one six point eleven, standards for alteration. Exterior cladding of a structure shall be consistent with the original materials used on the property. So staff recommends approval uh as submitted with the following clarification that the new siding should have the same exposure specs as the existing siding, should match the um and should be smooth and have no faux wood grain.
All right, do we have an applicant present?
Yes.
All right, where are you? There you are. Uh, state your name, please.
Uh, Dan Gessler.
You swear from the testimony you'll give tonight's the truth, old truth and nothing but the truth?
I do, yes.
Very well. Do you have, what have you to add?
Uh, I think that summed it up pretty well. Uh, originally the homeowner did want to do a larger profile. Um, but I did advise him that the uh, it's a current four inch profile, so we can easily match that and do it smooth. So uh we can make those accommodations.
Discussion. No discussion?
Jack, I just was curious about um the window detail. I think that we had asked about that, did that getting, did that get flushed out or vetted by any chance or did I miss?
That's kind of the main thing.
So, yeah, sorry about that. Um, the windows are being replaced at the same time. Uh, so it will be trimmed with James Hardy trim around the window. The um, the big window that's in the front that kind of projects out from the building will be done pretty much like, like it is now. Um, just with um James Hardy panels and trim. So the look will really not change on that box window there, on that big projection. The windows above the garage will be trimmed with Hardy trim just around picture framed.
I think a detail of that though, because it's going, it's gonna look different from the other units.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking at the picture, the first la- bottom picture before we get to the uh specs for the lap siding. And it looks like some of these windows are boxed out that, that are uh surrounded by siding.
The windows on your unit are, have been replaced as well. I looked, I mean, I, we didn't do them, but um, and they have been replaced as well and do have kind of a trim piece that would look very similar to what the Hardy siding would be.
If we have no more. I mean, do we want to take the window uh trim issue to staff or a subcommittee?
Yes, I'm okay with staff. I just, just wanted to ask that question since that was a kind of a detail question that we talked about before, so.
Any other?
The whole idea, the whole idea is trying to match in kind, just to try to maintain some sense of uniformity or consistency amongst the units.
I would agree.
Any other discussion?
So what, can I just ask a clarification point? What, what exactly does that mean?
That means that you would submit draw, a drawing showing your window, uh how you plan to trim out the windows. It would be submitted to staff. They would look at it and work through the process of coming through uh designing something appropriate.
And, and what would be the, what would be the appropriate trim for that? What am I looking to use as a, a model for?
The other windows that have been trimmed out in that bill, in that whole building. So that left-hand side of that building, do you see those windows?
So the windows that are on the unit to the right, like there's the, a unit that's sided, then there's the brick unit, then another sided unit.
Yep, the one to the south.
Yes, yes, thank you. So the one to the south, so you want the one that he's doing to be dictated by that? Even though those windows were replaced, I don't know what the trim is on those windows, but you want it to look similar to that.
Yes.
Okay.
Materiality would still be the Hardy. We were, I don't think we're trying to change the materiality that you're proposing. It's only just a dimension in terms of, you know, reference of the aesthetic.
Got you, got you.
Yes, sir.
I just, I knew what I needed. I'm gonna, I'll go back and see what that trim is and staff now.
Excellent. Do we have a motion? Hello, commissioners?
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Uh, make a motion uh to approve that submitted uh with the, the following.
Somebody needs to mute themselves.
Um, the Hardy trim window detail will be um clarified and submitted to staff uh for a final review and approval.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, second by, was that Moriarty?
Moriarty.
All right, uh, further discussion. Moriarty?
Yes.
Kotheimer?
Yes.
Lyselair? Is that yes?
Yes.
There it is, it's a yes. Conyers, I, I, I did the lip reading. Conyers?
Yes.
Hissam?
Yes.
Decker, yes. We are, we are a choir of unanimity today. Motion passes. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, so we need to choke up on um, need any of this text because I'm on my Surface Pro. So if you need motions, count me out. So the rest of you are gonna have to choke up on that.
Got it.
All right, I won't blame you for the lack, for the silence when, when we ask for a motion. What's next?
Thank you.
What's next?
The item seven, this is nine fifty-three Dennis and Avenue. Uh, two things are happening here, proposed, persistent, here down. The existing single story, single car garage, can replace it with a story and a half, two car garage per submitted drawings. And then also they're proposing a two-story addition on the south elevation of the house, measuring sixteen foot six inches by thirty-seven feet per submitted drawings. Um, we saw this first at the special meeting on June twenty-ninth, uh, at which point you guys had some comments saying that it wasn't clear from the photographs that deterioration was too far gone to rehabilitate the property um, and that the cost narrative was mainly cosmetic and should be adjusted. Additionally, let's see, oh, then there's some stuff for the addition. If we, do you want to do this in two parts or should I read all of the stuff at once?
Let's do this in two parts and I think we're, we've got enough information in front of us.
Yeah.
About the replacement, about the replacement garage to look at the demolition first.
Okay, great. And I would add that uh commissioners Conyers and Kotheimer were able to visit yesterday. Um, and so uh they may have some additional comments. Um, staff would recommend um retaining and repairing the garage for this portion of it. Um, and there were some questions about whether or not this resource was contributing. Staff does recommend that this is a contributing structure based on the National Park Service guidelines for evaluating resources. Um, and those guidelines were shared with the commissioners.
Um, where's, is our applicant here?
We're here.
Uh, where are you? Where, there you are. Do you, are you both going to offer testimony? Do you both swear? Uh, state your names, please.
Jim Cook.
Jessica Sprinkle.
Do you both swear firm the testimony you'll give tonight's truth, old truth and nothing?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I want to next hear from our demo inspection team of uh Lysel and or Sean, whoever wants to go next.
I can go. Um, so we went to visit this yesterday. Um, uh, like this photo, I don't know if these are photos from yesterday, I think they're from another day, but basically the structure seemed honestly pretty well cared for. There are some areas that have replaced siding. Um, there is some rotting, which is shown in this picture, that's on the north elevation. There's a gutter missing on the north elevation, so that might be uh the reason for the rotting. Um, there is a couple places where the sill plate um is deteriorating a little bit, but not something that couldn't easily be repaired. Um, is a tree within proximity on the east side of the building. And it's starting to grow into the structure. Um, but it has, it's maybe raised the ground level a bit, but nothing that's like caused any damage that's noticeable. Um, that's one of the locations, is a little bit of rotting. Um, it's freshly painted. Um, there was a couple comments from the owner that were, you know, it gets broken into, which any garage and um, generally like the ground plane is level, although water might run from the trees, raise a little bit through the um, garage. It generally has a nice concrete pad that doesn't look like it needs to be replaced. And um, what was I gonna say? Functions pretty well as a garage in, in.
Commissioner Conyers? What have you to add to this?
Yes, sir. Uh, Liesel's observations are, are, I would concur with. I think that majority of what I was trying to do is trying to understand, uh, you know, what would, what would the replacement, uh, I shouldn't say replacement, what would be repairs uh, that are needed? And what that would do to the overall structure itself. And with that, there are some items that are in need of repair. Um, but the repair items are not significant uh, enough that would start to challenge the integrity of the existing building. And uh, I guess I'm gonna have to utilize um, the staff's understanding of being a contributing building. Um, knowing that I think I looked at roughly about twenty thousand dollars worth of uh, items that are in need of repair based upon the estimates that would um, you know, remedy some of the items that we, that we saw.
So could you be a little more?
That's in the packet.
Could you be a little more specific about what you think needs to be repaired here? I mean, we've got a lot of buildings with a little bit of rot in them, including some residences.
Yes, sir. So if you were to uh, um, you know, maybe, maybe Sarah, would you advance to, there's a kind of a, I think a cost narrative that was kind of part of the packet, if I remember correctly.
Right.
Um, so I'm looking at the, that, it's right after the report from Schaefer. Uh, one more, right there. So just kind of going down through there, uh, replace existing concrete drive. I, I guess, you know, there are some items around the surrounding area that, but I, I guess we're, we're focusing really right now on the structure itself. So that item, I can't, I can't really include in the, in the evaluation uh, from that standpoint. Uh, repairs to masonry foundation, um, that's understood. Uh, I think to Liesel's point, um, there is the tree uh, that is to the east, um, that the tree itself has grown and matured. So it has varied the ground plane or elevation to be higher than the foundation uh, block itself. And so the, that's where you can see in that photograph that has the strongest amount of uh, seal plate rot uh, for roughly about maybe three or four feet uh, on that elevation.
So you've got a combination of heaved up uh, founda- foundation and sill plate there.
That's correct.
Along with rot and water invasion.
That's correct. Um, the framing repairs, there's a, a note here about framing repairs. We would agree in terms of, you know, the seal uh, and that seal plate and some of the vertical stud replacement that are rotted based upon um, you know, some of the water infiltration that has been uh, discussed. Um, so that would be applicable.
But wouldn't that just consist, wait, 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 wait. Before you, I just want to be clear. Would that
Yes, sir.
Just consist of sawzalling off uh, the bottom of the uh, several of these studs? Like three of them? And then uh, part of the sill plate and putting something else in? Or is, is that more uh, extensive surgery than that?
No, it's, 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 it's not. But at the same time, you want to have vertical studs that are going to go from the new sill plate. Those are going to be probably king studs that are going to go up to, you know, probably a ledger or a top plate, double top plate. I don't, I'm, a lot of times what you'll see is um, you know, kind of a quick fix where you may have one foot, six inches of overlap between the lower stud that you're replacing and the main, you know, vertical stud. And I think that's where, you know, that, that kind of toenail approach is, is something that is not a good fix, which we see a lot. So um, so I think what a gentleman is, is kind of referring to in terms of the estimate would probably be more vertical studs that would be in the interior to basically overcompensate or to compensate from the, the studs that are currently uh, rotted.
So you'd run your new studs all the way up to the top plate?
Yes, sir. You could. Yes, sir.
All right.
Um, the replaced, the roofing gutter, um, no, it's no problem. Replace roof, gutter and downspouts, those items I, I can't include because those kind of items are more general maintenance, you know, related items. Um, siding repairs, uh, I can understand that just given the understanding of the infiltration. So I did include that one. Uh, door repairs, uh, I, I understand and I did include those. Um, and then the scrape, power wash and repaint, I put that back under general maintenance. So uh, I think all in all, when I, that summary was roughly about plus or minus twenty thousand.
Got it.
Yes, sir.
All right. From the applicants, what do you add to all this?
Um, twenty thousand dollars is quite a bit of money to spend on that shed. I, I could rebuild a whole new shed for that price.
Can the, can the staff outline a little bit more clearly what the determining factors are for uh, the structure seemed to be uh, contributing?
The code says.
Yeah, are you referencing the National Park Service guidelines?
No, I'm going first to City Code thirty-one sixteen oh one seven. Property means a new structure, blah, 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 subject to part of the code, which this is. A contributing property is at least forty years of age or contributes the architectural character or historical and architectural significance of a group or district. Uh, this or is interesting because this is forty years old, so it's contributing. Uh, but if you go down to standards for demolition, it is kind of big on whether a property, whether property is contributing or not is the determining factor. It says, uh, if seeking to demolish an entire structure, blah, 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 we balance the historic architectural and cultural value of the structure and the purposes of this chapter against various factors. So I think it's somewhat vague. And, but I think we are all looking at the same thing, which is what is the architectural, historic significance or value of this structure? Uh, no matter how you slice it, that's what the park service guidelines are trying to get at. And I think that's what the code is trying to get at. This is, in my opinion, kind of on the edge. It is a very humble structure. On the other hand, we have lots of them throughout the neighborhood. We have a number of small, humble garages around. And I would be very loath to say none of them have any particular value that prevents their demolition. But that's my speech. Uh, the other commissioners may disagree with me.
I mean, were you trying to raise your hand?
Yeah, I just wanted to say ki- kind of what, oh, actually, I never was sworn in, so we'll, uh, Jack.
Do you swear affirm the testimony who gives the truth, old truth, and nothing but?
I do.
Thank you, Connie.
So I think that you do need to maybe first the commission, maybe get a straw poll vote. Is this a contributing structure? If yes, if no, then there's no problem with demolishing it. If yes, then you, then you still can look at uh, the code that you were uh, referring to, which you didn't read uh, completely, three one one six one four, where it says, "The commission shall be guided in its decision thereupon by balancing the historic, architectural and cultural value of the structure or architectural feature." And then going back, kind of skipping to the bottom there. Uh, or, and the merit of the replacement project. So, and, and also uh, substantial economic hardship. So you can still weigh that. So is it contributing, yes or no? And then, and then consider that. That's my suggestion.
Uh, well, remember, the definition of a contributing property is, it is at least forty years of age or contributes the architectural character or historic or, and architectural significance of a group or district. So if we find this is older than forty years, it's contributing. That's what this says.
Well, that's, I, the commission hasn't, the commission hasn't said that as a whole yet, so.
Well, that's my question. Is there any serious question whether this is older than forty years?
Well, here's what I think. I think that we haven't looked at the design and the merit of the design that they're trying to replace it with. So we can decide, is the design better? Does it add value architecturally? Does it have some reference to the older structure? Or is it basically, I want a new big garage and I'm tearing the old garage down?
We have a new design, let's talk about that. Applicants, what have you to say about your new garage? I think we've got pictures here.
Okay. So can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So the new garage is uh, the same height as the existing house. It is not meant to be uh, overwhelming to the property. It has a, a really three-quarter story above it that's going to be used as a photography studio um, with a new carriage house style garage door that um, would replicate the original doors of the structure that was original to the structure or to the property before it was demolished, before the garage in question was built.
So what's this? So, so I'm seeing adding two buildings to this property.
So, so the other building that you're seeing is the second part of this application, which is in addition to the house.
Right, we've divided this into A and B and we're taking on the app, the uh, demo first.
Correct.
But I think it is, I agree with Commissioner Hissam, it's appropriate to look at the garage, at least uh, generally speaking, what the proposal is before we go further.
Is the width of that garage same as the width of the house?
It is slightly wider. It's not the same width as the house.
Schematically, I could see where I, buildings and it pulls apart. One becomes a garage, one becomes the house. But when the garage gets bigger, like on steroids, it doesn't work within that schematic.
So, so if the question is about reducing the width of the garage eighteen inches, can that be coupled along with the broader conversation of whether or not it's appropriate?
Yes.
Okay.
I would point out that uh, garage is going to be pretty much blocked if the addition goes in. Uh, you won't be able to see much of it from the street anyway. Although from the alley, it's a different story.
From the alley, it's a different story. So it should look the same both ways. And so, so I think in this scheme, I'm, I kind of like this scheme. Um, but I think the garage facade needs to look more like the front of your house, which is fairly plain, doesn't have a fancy door or anything like that. Um, so it reads back to Does that make sense?
Yes, yes, that, yes. Yes, I think the, the design of the garage door is, you know, we're willing to go back and forth on that to, to find something that is deemed appropriate. We're looking at the, you know, the broader scheme as well, so.
So that's my opinion. I don't know what the other commissioners think, but I like the scheme of the block sliding back and forth on the lot. They're the same in proportion in height. One happens to be a fraud, one happens to be the main house, and the new one happens to be the addition connector piece. Squirrels, let's, let's go.
Well, for more discussion.
Um, I can, so regardless of the addition, if we're considering this, we're considering the additions separately from the garage. I think generally the addition is okay, except for the fact that it is taller than the
Yeah, I think we need to stick with the garage issue right now and then, and demolition, number one, before we get too far afield and we will get back to the uh, addition.
Okay, in regards to the garage, I think that it functions quite well as a garage and that it's an issue of modern convenience, suburban convenience to want it to be something more than that. So they bought a garage and that's what they have. And that, that particular garage doesn't seem to be what they wanted, but that's the garage that they bought. So that's my
My garage got flooded last night because I have a tree growing into it. The whole thing got flooded yesterday. And it's just gonna continue to get worse.
I, I think there's certain, there's certain sacrifices of living in a historic neighborhood. I would argue that ma- many historic homes in, in this country get water in the basements when it rains. And that's something that is pretty common in living in a historic home. Um, so I don't really think of it as some, some sort of extreme problem. Something to be expected of a historic home.
Yep, I think my opinion on the garage issue is that we've established that it has historical significance and that the special committee didn't see um, the cost associated with it that couldn't be fixed. So it seems that it um, is smaller than the owner wishes it was, but that doesn't mean it warranted a demolition.
I, I just, my issue with this is, again, what does it take to knock down a building? Is it that it is inadequate to the uh, owner's current needs? Or is it that it, he proposes, he or she or it proposes to replace it with something larger and grander? Uh, I would suggest that neither of those is a good reason for a demolition. Uh, and that we need something substantially more than that. Because otherwise, this is a decision that could, correct me if I'm wrong, replicate itself throughout the neighborhood for uh, buildings that are not prohibitively expensive to fix. That's my speech. Further discussion? Hearing, are we there or look like everybody froze for a second? All right, are we ready for a motion and a vote on the demolition? Anything further from the applicants?
I, I agree and I, I appreciate the conversation of what is determined to be prohibitively uh, burdensome in terms of burdensome in terms of cost. But again, I think, like we discussed with the commissioners when they were on site, I I hope to communicate the point that, you know, there may be only other or maybe only three other houses in this neighborhood that are less than twenty feet tall. And again, we're not looking to build something that is overwhelming to the property. So I I just want those things to be considered.
Thank you. I don't think any of us has serious issues except for eighteen inches and ornamentation with the proposed replacement garage. If we do, I missed it. All right, are we ready for a vote? Morariarty, yes or no? Aaron?
Do we have a motion?
Oh, did we? I think I maybe I forgot. Shall we have a motion to approve as submitted? The demolition.
Approve as submitted.
Motion, Hissam, do we have a second? Second, Conyers. All right, further discussion. Morariarty?
No.
Kothimer?
No.
Conyers?
No.
Hissam?
Yes.
Decker, no. Motion fails. Do you want to go ahead and discuss part A, which is the addition?
Yes.
Has staff presented on the addition yet? Or do you want to just kick it over to the applicant?
I can add a few quick staff comments.
Sure.
Just that staff would recommend that the plans for the addition would be altered to be lower than the existing or the house and have a smaller footprint, because the shotgun is a very distinctive style and the proposed addition would significantly alter the floor plan. Otherwise, just to remind you guys of the comments from the special meeting, which were that the addition should be lower or at least no taller than the original structure and that the siding should not be stick, have fake wood grain or be textured. That's it.
All right, applicants, what say you?
So the addition to the house is meant to replicate or duplicate the shotgun, the the existing shotgun style. There is an existing tree that is on the front of the property. And I know that it is currently shown as taller. If it's a recommendation by the commission moving forward, we can make it equivalent in height. But I think right now it's only a foot and a half taller than the existing structure, if I remember correctly. The offset and with the the combination of the offset back from the face of the existing house and the tree are meant to make that addition appear to be the same size. The the only reason that it's taller is to have functional headspace in the bathroom and the bedroom that are located on the upper floor of that addition. We ran through iterations of this with dormers, as was also suggested in the special meeting, and the dormers popping out the sides that made made it appear much more massive than a foot and a half increase on the single gable.
Discussion.
So I I think what's interesting about this is understand the your your need to have them look the same. And I think because of how it staggered back and on the lot, I think the perception will be that they sort of are the same height. I don't think they're going to read that different.
Which is our intention.
Yep, I was kind of having the same opinion, Jeff, that since it's set so far back that probably that foot and a half wouldn't be as noticeable.
If it was a foot pulled back, I would say, but there's enough distance and that lot drops enough that I don't think you're going to read that difference at all.
I agree with that. The only thing is that I kind of, I don't, obviously, it's you can't see from the elevations the detail of how the addition meets the existing house. But if there was some way to make it not overwhelm it in the attachment, that would probably just be better.
I have a I have a que I have a question for my fellow commissioners, which is currently the addition shows imitating the window trim style of the main house. Shouldn't this be simpler?
No, I don't think so.
It's already simple. It can't really get simpler.
Well, it's got these little crowns over it and stuff. Four, eight panes and all that stuff.
And I also think to your comment, Liesl, I think because the little cottage is in the front, it sets the precedent for the rest of the facade. So anything that's behind that sort of falls in line. I I don't think it kind of, I don't think that connection overwhelms it.
I'm more thinking of like our own due diligence to to so this house doesn't in any way appear to be over or the addition in any way doesn't appear to be overwhelming them.
Got it.
This one item just to consider is, you know, right now, obviously, there's a pairing of windows and those pairing of windows in terms of penetration is a little stronger than the cottage. So what could happen is that would be on, you know, the the east and the west facade that those go back to being singles. So for instance, there could be two singles, two single windows on the lower level and then a single window on the second floor of the east facade. And then you could replicate or or kind of go to two windows if you needed to on the the west facade. But I think the pairing of two windows side by side, I think that's where the dominance is is kind of being maybe subconsciously viewed, just based upon the amount of glazing in in that area.
I agree with that. And that was one of the reasons for my comment about the window trim was making them simpler would make the might make the addition seem less massive. I did walk by the structure and the tree, there is a tree in the front yard that makes it difficult to see from the street what the height of the addition is going to be. But that obscure, that will only obscure that as long as the tree lives. That's another point.
I I think it, I think this respects the originality and the architecture of the original cottage. And I think it's, you know, respecting it and saying it is different, it is new. I'm I'm fine with it. I don't think they it needs to be a one for one match.
Is this in shape to give a final approval? Or should we treat this as a conceptual? And do we need more detail and drawings?
I think we need more drawings. I agree with Sean's comments about the windows. And so I'd like to see the the windows addressed. And again, I still think the the sort of joinery of it at a tail level, I don't I don't know if there's a way to have it have a less noticeable height difference.
I had a question about the materials. Is the applicant planning to re-site the existing front structure?
No.
No, okay. So your application has a blue Hardy siding circle, but the elevation is showing like a white. And then you have a difference in windows also where the addition has black framed windows and your original structure is white frame. Is that of concern to your question at all?
So colors, is this a question for the applicant?
Well, I guess if if your elevation is what you're planning on constructing or if it's the materials that you've circled is the question.
So the the values for the colors were included with the garage elevations. They're not as submitted in the product brochures that are by James Hardy. It's the colors that are in the renderings. They're Sherwin-Williams paint colors. The windows are meant to be black with black trim to contradict the existing house or or offset it a little bit to show that it's a part of the new structure. And then the the paint for the siding is a vertical is a vertical board and baton that is like a cream color.
So I think we need to go back. So I think we need to go back to what was that. Is this a conceptual? This is the first time we've seen this. And do we need more information, commissioners? Or are we ready to vote on this thing?
I think at the very least, we've given the applicant some pretty clear guidance that the dimensions of the of addition are okay. Its orientation is okay. Three commissioners, myself, Conyers and Kothimer, want to see the penetration on the east end changed. Uh, I think, you know, if we do treat it as a conceptual, we've given some pretty clear guidance they can go back with and come up with final drawings.
I would agree.
Last month was the conceptual review and we we changed this, all the conversation last month. And if it's a matter of just changing a couple of windows, we can have that done very quickly and staff staff couldn't review that.
What do you think? Is it a sufficient set of drawings to issue a certificate on? Or do we need more?
Well, in comparison.
I'm no architect, but this looks pretty thin to me.
No, in comparison to previous projects, I mean, obviously, in terms of gaining approvals on projects, this is light in comparison. So if we turn that over to staff, would staff be able to, you know, evaluate all of those items with those additions, you know, against this? That just doesn't seem like it's that's fair to do to them.
Clear understanding of the overhangs and gutters and things like that?
There's a sun.
Twelve inch overhang and that sort of thing.
Correct, yeah.
There's cuts.
That's what I think that's what we're calling. I think that's what we're looking at is it would probably be nice to have, you know, a section cut through it, being able to have those kind of things and some kind of dimension. So that when you were able to review it, you had an opportunity to just confirm whatever was in for the permit drawings was consistent or somewhat consistent to what we are, you know, reviewing today. That's all.
Think staff is okay with that if the commission is okay with that.
What are we supposed to be okay with? Staff review or or continuing? Connie, who do you recommend? I I agree, but I'm not an architect. Anybody else?
I think there needs to be more information.
That's three of us.
Yes, agreed.
I think we need to give this one more go around, although you're very, very close to an approvable project. But we you can work with staff to come up with drawings that are sufficiently detailed and call out enough of these issues that they can approve it. All right?
So next time before the commission with those drawings, it will not be conceptual? It will be for approval?
It would be, the next would be, hopefully, if the drawings are okay, then we can approve.
Okay.
So do we have a motion to continue? Part B.
Motion to continue, B.
Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, Morariarty?
Yes.
Kothimer?
Yes.
Conyers?
Yes.
Hissam?
Yes.
Decker, yes. Motion passes. All right, thank you very much. Sorry, this isn't so as easy as it looks. All right, what's next?
Next is item eight, ten fifty one North High Street. This is to install a permanent digitally printed vinyl wall sign measuring forty-two inches high by thirteen feet, six inches wide per the submitted documentation and to install lettering into a vertical window panel. So the applicant addressed the commission comments from the business meeting and altered the sign layout. So this image right here is the new proposal and the one on the page right after it was what they brought to the business meeting. They've decreased the overall sign of the size of the sign and added the text into the window rather than across the sign. The short north design guidelines say that signage should not obscure any architectural elements. And again, that the maximum allowable area for a wall sign that will be supported is twenty-five square feet. Yes, and so staff recommends approving the application as submitted with the following clarifications, that the wall sign is no more than twenty-five square feet, that it reflects the updated drawings, and that the sign may be installed for six months, but then it should return to the commission for further review.
All right, do we have an applicant with us?
Uh, yes.
All right, I hear a voice from somewhere. Who are you, please?
My name's Logan. I'm a day night sign company.
Very well. Do you swear affirm the testimony you give is the truth, the old truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Very well. You've got, you're on a bit of a video delay, so you tend to freeze up on us. Do you have anything to add?
Um, just for the the six month review, is that for the now leasing portion, the on the windows? Or do you mean the whole, the sign up above as well? Because the sign up above would like to be permanent.
The now leasing part is inside the window, right?
Yes.
The part above that says Valencia on high is going to be on plastic, but you intend that to be there forever?
Permanent, yes.
Uh, ordinarily, it's the now leasing stuff that's oversized or otherwise weird that we require subject to a periodic review. But any of the other commissioners can pop right in here.
Um, I can comment on it. So it looks like the Valencia sign, that should be less than twenty-five square feet, which doesn't appear to be if it's going to be permanent. It also should not have a website on it that does not meet the signage guidelines for a permanent sign. So it can only have the name and the address. Um, and so that's a separate thing if that's going to be permanent. And then as far as the temporary sign, yes, that would need to come back on a periodic basis for review. But otherwise, I think the temporary signage is okay.
I don't know that we have jurisdiction over the temporary sign if it's on the inside of a window, do we?
The window cover. It's covering the window and usually signage can't cover more than what, twenty-five percent of a window?
I'm thumbing through the guidelines. I'm gonna have to trust you there.
It's because we've reviewed all the window decals and I believe it's twenty or twenty-five percent.
Yeah, that came up when we were doing Orange Barrel with the White Castle Building. Remember?
There we go. So this would basically be supportable as a temporary promotion, but not as permanent signage. Is that what you're telling me?
Yep. So what do you say?
Yeah, that sounds fine. If you want to put the conditions, twenty-five square feet and no website for the upper sign. And then the now leasing portion on the windows, we have to come back every six months. That's totally fine. Sounds reasonable.
Is that what we're saying, or that he has a choice of including the website and treating the upper sign as a temporary too?
We do not want to treat the upper sign as temporary. We definitely want that one to be permanent.
Got it.
It's hard to tell. One more comment. It's hard to tell because of the angles of the building, but I'm assuming that the upper sign aligns with the seams in the paneling, even though right now it looks like it's kind of sticking out to the side of the window.
Yeah, that would be the intention, try and line it up with everything.
Okay, just making sure. I can make a motion?
Please.
Okay. Make a motion that the upper sign is a temporary sign and shall be resized to be under twenty-five square feet and not include a web address, just the name of the building. And that the window sign is a temporary sign. That web address may move down there and must be brought back for review in six months.
Have we a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Applicant, will that do it for you?
Yeah, sounds good.
More clarity?
Yes.
Kothimer?
Yes.
Conyers?
Yes.
Hissam? Decker, yes. Motion passes. There you go.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Can I just say something, Jack?
Yes.
In regards to time, I have a hard stop at six, so we're getting, we're getting there.
I know. I'm trying to move it along as fast as I can.
And I would have to jump off slightly before six thirty.
We have, where are we? We're having trouble. Let's go to West Second Avenue.
Sure, this is item number nine, one thirty-four to one thirty-eight West Second. This is an application to landscape the front yard per the submitted drawings, adding flowerbeds, bushes, and perennials in the front and backyards and planting grass, and removing existing bushes and a pine tree that is thirty feet tall, plus then planting a tree to replace the removed pine tree. The applicant was informed that they need an arborist report. We haven't received that yet, but I've heard from the applicant that they found an arborist who then didn't show up and now they're just having trouble getting an arborist report. Applicable standard here is three one one six point one three. Standards for site improvement, sit landscaping and similar improvements should be compatible to each other and to the subject building or structure, as well as to the adjacent contributing properties, open spaces, and environment. The staff recommends approving the application with the clarification that an arborist report should be submitted to staff for review and approval prior to issuance of a certificate.
All right, Lysel, any problems with this? Any problems with getting the arborist report after? Is the applicant here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, well, let's not ignore you. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you will give today is the truth of the whole truth and nothing but the truth, Mr. Van Fossen? Hello?
Sorry, froze up for a second there.
Do you swear? Yes. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give today is the truth? The whole truth and nothing but?
Yeah.
Very well. Do you have anything to add?
No, the request is pretty simple. As was mentioned, just having trouble getting an arborist report. A couple no-shows now. I got another guy coming out next week, but hopefully I can get that in. I guess my main question is like, under what circumstances would the request be denied pending the arborist report?
Well, I think what we're intending to do is, unless I'm mistaken, to approve this and then instruct staff to give you a certificate, assuming you submit a sufficient report about the tree, right?
Yep.
And so what is that report supposed to say?
Yep. What is it supposed to say?
Staff, what are you looking for?
Generally, we're looking to see the health of the tree. I know we also like to see a plan for a tree to be replanted later, but another staff member may have more information.
Lysel, what do you think of this?
Hold on, I'm looking at it again for a second. I think that, I think the only thing I would say is that the tree that replaces it be of a reasonable size. Like, that's a, I don't know what the caliper of that tree is, but it looks pretty large, even though pine tree, and I'm assuming you're not going to do a pine tree, so I would say that I don't, I'm not really sure what's a reasonable size of a tree, but it shouldn't be like, like, let's just say two inches caliber.
Is the tree that's going to be sacrificed, this pine tree nearest the house?
Yeah, it's kind of lined up with the front door.
Got it.
Yeah, there's a big beautiful oak tree. We want to keep that.
Yeah.
I was having, I was getting apoplectic for a minute. Never mind. Okay, any further discussion?
Can I just add something real quick?
Yes.
So we put in an application for the city for a street tree. That application was approved. It sounds like the city is going to plant a tree of their own choice, so I'm not sure what kind of control we're going to have over the replacement tree.
Okay.
It seems to me the two-inch caliber tree near the house and then a tree in front would well compensate for the removal of this pine.
I would say so. And I think that if you replace the pine, it could go in the back as well. I think a two-inch caliber tree somewhere on the property would be.
That's a good call, I think.
I don't think it needs to be in the front of the house.
Okay.
I would agree. I think we're going to be too crowded again.
Yeah, okay. I think we can work that into our plan.
Have we a motion? Are we ready for one?
I'll make a motion. Move, a motion to approve as submitted with a arborist report being submitted to staff for the removal of the pine tree and a two-inch caliber tree to be of the owner's choice to be planted anywhere on the property as a replacement for the pine tree.
Very well, and the approval is conditioned on the, receives the arborist report, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Further discussion? More clarity?
Yes.
Kothimer?
Yes.
Conyers?
Yes.
Hissam?
Yes.
Decker, yes. Thank you very much. You're approved.
Great, thank you. I'll get that arborist report.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Next?
All right, agenda item ten, eleven eighty-three Highland. This is to replace all of the siding on the house and the detached garage with James Hardy Smooth four-inch lap siding. There's currently four different types of siding, including cedar shake, wood lap, vinyl dutch lap, and wood dutch lap. The applicant proposes to retain the wood trim around the porch windows, soften fascia, and paint it white, and then add wood trim painted white to areas that don't currently have trim. And also to replace the roof with JF Slate Line English Slate shingles with metal ridge roll for hips and ridges. Applicable standards are three one one six point eleven. Standards for alteration. Distinguishing characteristics of a property shall not be destroyed. The removal or alteration of any historic material shall be avoided whenever possible. Deteriorated architectural features shall be repaired rather than replaced whenever possible. In the event that is necessary, the new material shall match materials being replaced in composition, design, color, texture, and other visual qualities. Victorian Village Guidelines echo that saying that new material that duplicates the size, shape, and texture of an original is appropriate. And on the June twenty-fourth business meeting, commissioners requested more information about the trim, especially regarding how it'll be applied around the windows, and they asked if there would be corner boards. Staff has not yet received additional information from and staff recommends approval of the application as submitted, but with trim and corner board details to be submitted for review and approval prior to issuance of a certificate.
Thank you. Do we have an applicant?
Yes, sir.
Who is that?
I'm Jarrett Fuller.
All right, I don't see you.
Sorry, my video's spinning here for a second. Sorry.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you will give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but?
Yes, I do.
Technically, I'm supposed to be able to see you, but I'll.
I'm on there now, I think.
There you are. Do you swear?
Yes, I do.
Oh, I saw you for a second. I saw your hand move. All right, what have you to add?
Just basically, the additional information they asked for as well were some pictures of a cutout sample of the siding, which doesn't seem to be here, but we did submit that documentation prior to the meeting to Kimberly. That actually, the siding that's on the main structure is actually not the original siding. It is a cellulose-type base asphalt-based product that's falling apart when we took it off. The other part is that it's vinyl on the addition part there. There's multiple different types of siding on the the house itself and the detached garage. And basically, we're looking to try to just provide some consistency that's, you know, consistent with another home that's a few houses down the street that we also provided in this. Going with the four-inch smooth, maintaining the wood structure, the details above the windows. The areas where we would have to add, the wood trim would be there in the vinyl section, you know, to try to make it look consistent. And then as far as the question regarding the corners, yes, we would add a corner, a corner board on each side to, you know, box edit and make it look more consistent with some of the other houses that have that kind of siding. Similar to what's on the garage, sorry.
When you pull up the asphalt shingles, the asphalt siding, what did you find? What's under there?
There is a four-and-a-half inch, looks like a beveled type of dutch lap wood siding under there. The problem is I don't know what the full extent and condition of it is throughout the home.
Oh, that's it. It's hard to see, but okay, very well. Discussion.
I'm kind of doing the corner boards.
That's correct. I would agree in terms of the, just the trim. The portion of, that's kind of the addition. I don't necessarily think that he needs to replicate the exact current window trim. But just for clarification, existing homes' window trim is going to remain. That's going to be untouched. And then the siding is going to be introduced. And then the only new trim on the existing home is going to be the vertical corner boards that Hissam was mentioning.
I have an issue with re-siding the rear addition with exactly the same siding that's on the main house. That is so clearly an after-added addition. I think it should say addition.
I think it does clearly by its structure.
I would agree. I think the idea about the window fenestration.
Yeah. I think it reeks new structure without having to put a different material on it and call it out even further.
I agree.
All right, wanted to raise that. How about the garage? Is it okay to do that the same?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Further discussion?
I just have one thing to clarify what you just said. Are you saying that you don't want us to, you don't think it makes sense to put the same siding on the new addition portion of the house that has vinyl on it?
That was me, and I was shouted down by all the other commissioners. So that, so far, we're back to your.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I just didn't understand what you're saying. You're saying that you want to keep it vinyl on that addition part because it is an addition, is what you're saying?
No, no, no. Disregard my comment. It's not shared by the other five.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you. Okay.
There, all right.
Make a motion as submitted, adding the corner boards.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, Hissam, second. Was that Aaron?
Yep.
Thank you. More clarity?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
You cut in and out. Sometimes it's hard to hear the whole word. Kothimer?
Yes.
Conyers?
Yes.
Hissam?
Yes.
Decker, yes. Motion passes. Very well, thank you. Next?
Next is agenda item eleven, three four eight West Second. The applicant would like to remove three double-hung windows on the south elevation and install three double-hung Woodstar pine wood windows with clear glass, white interior trim, and black exterior roofing. New windows should fit within the existing openings and match the slash and pane configuration. The applicant did submit additional photos of the current window conditions, which are on page nine. And staff would recommend that replacement windows are not, would be on the approved list. These are not approved windows. Let's see, standards for alteration, three one one six point eleven. Distinguishing characteristics of a property shall not be destroyed. Removal or alteration of historic material or distinctive feature shall be avoided whenever possible. And deteriorated architectural features shall be repaired rather than replaced whenever possible. So after taking a look at the additional photos that were submitted, staff recommends that the windows are retained and repaired rather than replaced. Photographic evidence indicated faulty hardware and excess paint, which can be repaired or repainted. Staff would recommend continuing the application to allow the applicant time to investigate repair options.
Do we have an applicant? Hello, calling all applicants. Hearing nothing. Do I have a motion to continue?
Motion to continue.
Second.
Further discussion? More clarity?
Yes.
Kothimer?
Yes.
Conyers? Sean?
Yes. Sorry, I was on you.
Hissam?
Yes.
Decker, yes, but it's continued. Next?
All right, next is item twelve, three two two Wilbur Avenue. The applicant would like to construct a new two-car garage on the alley at the rear of the lot where there is no existing structure. The garage would have a twenty-two-foot-by-twenty-two-foot footprint and be located next to an existing parking pad. They provide materials. And let's see, commission requested a scaled and measured side plan at the business meeting, which the applicant did provide. It's included in the packet. We also took a look at sandborne maps that indicated there was historically a garage on the property. These are maps from nineteen oh one, nineteen twenty-one, and nineteen fifty-one. Applicable standards are that the building height with mass and proportion affect the degree of compatibility between the old and the new. The commission shall consider, in addition to pertinent factors, the architectural characteristics typical of structures in the district or listed property and the relationship of this resource to the other structures in the immediate neighborhood. Victorian Village Guidelines include that accessory structures such as garages should be designed to complement the primary structure on the sites. The detailing might be simpler, but should be compatible. Otherwise, appropriateness will be judged according to its own detail and visual impact on adjacent buildings and the village in general. Staff would recommend approval as submitted with the following clarification. This was that a scaled and measured side plan should be submitted, which they have submitted a plan, so if y'all take a look and see if that's what you need.
All right, just. All right. Uh, just, do we have an applicant?
Yes, you do. I'm here.
Uh, Mr. Ray?
Yes, Ray Phillips.
Uh, Ray Phillips, you swear affirm the testimony you're going to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Very well. Do you have anything to add?
No, I don't.
Discussion.
I just, this is Sean. I'll go first. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Sean.
And the, the, the one thing I just was, that's curiosity is, is the main door that addresses, the main garage door that addresses the alley is a single, you know, two car garage door in lieu of uh it being two separate garage doors. So uh, I know turning radius and a lot of that plays into that decision. So I just didn't know if um, the alley condition warranted a single garage door.
Applicant?
No, uh, no, it doesn't. It was just a preference uh by the homeowner.
So it would be more appropriate to have two single doors. That's usually our preference. Any other?
I agree with that. If the alley um width allows for it, uh, it should have two separate doors.
Any other comments?
I agree. And then the detail of the door is wrong.
Yeah. Shouldn't it be just flat?
Yep.
You don't want any uh the raised panel look?
No.
Too frou frou. What about the doors facing the house? Same? Windows, okay, but get rid of all those.
Yep.
Yep. Any other discussion? Anybody disagree with me and Mr. Hissin?
Um, I don't remember the, the detail on garage doors needing to be plain. Haven't we approved something other than that?
Not those, not that many panels, Erin.
All right, but if it's two single doors, it would be less panels.
Per door. I, I think this garage bespeaks simplicity, particularly with the alley side of it. And then the outside of it's got a lot going on anyway with lights, windows, man door and all that other stuff. I think Jeff was right. But that's me. Any other discussion? Or e- either any of those changes problematic? Ray?
I would have to talk to the homeowner. I know two doors is twice as expensive as one door. Uh, the, um.
That's the default for the neighborhood though.
The, it's a 22, uh, 22 foot wide garage. So let me think this through. Two foot on either side. That gives me 18 foot. Two foot in the center between the doors gives me 16 foot and that's two eight foot doors that, um, so, uh, uh, bringing that down. So I would have to look at the, um, the turning radius in the garage to see if uh, that eight foot would work. However, if you look at the door, the garage is on either side of this. All around it, if you stood in the alley and looked around at the two car garages, they all have two car doors. I don't have a picture of that with me. The purple garage you see there is a, is a, is a single large door.
It wouldn't surprise me, but on the other hand, some of these garages went up a long time ago.
Right. Well, if you're talking about the appropriateness for the neighborhood.
All right. Do we have any further discussion? We have a motion? Somebody?
I would love to make a motion, but I, I'm, I'm, I, I don't know if he's, he's ready. I, I don't know if he's going to accept what, if so, it seems like it would be a motion to continue to allow him to go back to the homeowner.
No, I would like, if, if, I, I'm sorry to interrupt.
I think the best thing to do is to prove it for two doors and if that doesn't work, he can come back.
I, I agree. Thank you.
I would also just say, looking at it, it looks like the vast majority of, of garages here have two doors. Uh, and there are some older garages that appear to have one larger door.
All right. Do we have a motion for two doors and no raised panels on them? And otherwise is submitted. Somebody?
Okay, uh, can I, uh, just add one other thing? So the, the, the smaller yard side garage door that is not seen from the street, that is only going to be seen from the, uh, homeowner's backyard. Uh, so the style of it, what they're looking for is a carriage uh style door. Uh, not, they're not look, they're not what, uh, aiming to look at a, um, a flat, uh, 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 undecorative door.
So I'm fine, I'm fine with that back, that back uh, man door being like a two panel. And I think that carriage door they're looking for, it's, needs to be a more simpler carriage door, if that's what you're looking for.
There's a, the garage, the garage on the other side of the alley has a carriage door. It, that is something you could look at as appropriate.
Okay.
Uh, do we want to have the carriage door submitted to staff for approval?
I think that's.
Subcommittee.
I think it can go to staff.
I agree.
All right. Did we have a motion or did I miss it?
Can I, oh, sorry, homeowner, homeowner here. I don't know if I can say anything or not, but I did have one clarifying comment.
Are you, are you the homeowner, Mr.?
Jeff Tur, Jeff Turwin, yeah.
I can't, your print is small. All right. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're going to give us the truth, the whole truth?
I do.
And nothing but. Very well. What have you to add?
Uh, we've lived on the street now for eight years and the, the neighbors right behind us have the two single garage doors and they have the center post and they have to back into our property and do a three point turn every time they come in and out of their garage. And they've actually struck a contractor who was parked in our off street behind us because they have a a complicated turn in and out every time, um, they go into their garage. So that was actually part of our motivation to do a single door to, to ease that turning arc and be able to get in and out of the garage and not having that wider garage um, to do that. So that was part of our motivation. We see it most every day. So I just wanted to clarify that point.
That is a wide alley though, and it should be a sufficient turning radius.
Maybe they're just bad drivers.
They might be.
Or their automobiles are too big.
That too. I'm measuring 17 feet, which is, you know, greater than a standard alley.
Let's, let's have a motion and if it doesn't, with the understanding that if it doesn't work, the applicant can come back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve as submitted with a uh amendment of two doors in lieu of one door on the alley side. And the door on that alley side to be uh more simplified. Um, and those selections, those door selections to be reviewed by staff.
What about the carriage doors? I thought that was going to be the one that staff was going to look at and the alley doors were going to be flat.
I think they can look at all the doors.
I would agree. I would agree, Liesel. That, I think that both doors, they, they should take an inventory, look at them and then they should submit both door solutions. Um, back to staff for our final approval.
Very well. Do we have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All right, here we go. More clarity?
Yes.
Codeimer?
Yes.
Conyers?
Yes.
Hissin?
Yes.
Decker, yes. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you also very much.
Let us know that if you can't get in and out of this thing. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Next.
Commissioners, I'm out of here.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Let the record reflect. We're down to four. All right.
Okay. So just noting that it is six. We do want to continue. Is that right?
Yeah, do we? I think we.
Continue to about 6:25.
Okay. And we will keep going.
We'll be willing to continue to 6:25 as well.
Great. So item 13 is a wall alley between Greenwood Avenue and Fifth Avenue. The applicant would like to install 16 LED lights along, uh, staggered on either side of the alley. The lights would be mounted on four buildings throughout the alley. Lighting would include RGBW, um, light fixtures with movable heads and four photocell sensors. And all lights would be installed in the mortar, not on the bricks. Uh, the applicant has provided a little more information as well, which said that for each of the four buildings, there would be one exterior outlet uh per building. They would daisy chain the lights on each building with black cord attached to the brick. Which I was a little bit unclear if how that would be attached to the brick, the daisy chain. So that's a question I have. Standards for alteration state that whenever possible, a new addition or alteration shall be accomplished so that its future removal will not impair the essential functionality of the structure. Short North Design Guidelines state that simple modern fixtures should be used when there's no physical or historical documentation of original fixture or no fixture would have existed historically. And that lighting fixtures should be of commercial quality material and construction but have a residential aesthetic in terms of design, color, and other visual qualities. Uh, so the staff recommends, let's see, oh, the, well, I was going to recommend continuing the application so the commission can review the mounting and electrical plans. But we did just get those sent in, um, so those should be in the packet, which you guys did receive yesterday, but um, yes, I'm not sure if you'll need more time to review.
Have we an applicant?
Yep, I'm here. This is Caitlin.
Who is you?
Caitlin Dunn.
Hi Caitlin, do you swear affirm the testimony you're going to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
There you go. You're, you're a shadow of your former self. You can't. Very well. Okay. What have you to add, if anything?
That was a, a good summary. So I know we've been having to, these discussions with the lights in Wall Alley, um, for a while now. We really wanted to kind of bring an element of art, um, to the other three buildings, specifically the two on the other side that we weren't able to put any, um, paint on the bricks. So we're going to be super, um, careful with the, installing the lights into the mortar. Um, we, I, I put a couple of pictures in there as we just kind of tested a couple of things, um, but you can see it's not intrusive into the brick. We'd have those lights where you see those green dots, um, scattered throughout. I put on an additional picture roughly the height, but, um, we'd also want to minimize any sort of cord. So we're hoping to tap into all of the existing, um, uh cords that are already there. You can kind of see in a couple of the pictures, but i- if, if, if you reviewed, you probably kind of got the general idea. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
I am totally baffled how you're going to wire this. This is going to be exterior grade electric cord that leads where?
So it'll lead to each individual building. So for example, the one on the back of the Short North stage wall, there's an existing light already there, kind of smack dab in the middle of the mural. Um, that has a line there, um, for the building next to that towards the south. There's also an existing power line that we tap into for that. Um, so it's a small, and you can kind of see in one of the pictures, it's a small, um, black cord that would run to the opposite side of the building into a power source.
Okay. And how would this be attached to the wall?
So it, it would go right into the mortar. I don't know if, if you have a picture in there, Sarah, of just kind of the mockup. Um, but they might.
It's one, it's one of those jobbies with like a, uh, hook at the end of it and then a flat thing that accepts a fastener. And it just pins the cable against the wall. Is that what you're talking about using?
For the cord?
Yeah.
Uh, yes.
There you go. So everybody have a clear picture of what this is? Anybody? Discussion?
Yeah. Yeah, I think what I was worried just about is what, what's going to happen with, you know, are we going to express conduit or in order to provide power? So with the understanding that the new power cord or, uh, is going to be almost, uh, you know, installed as uh, being supported almost in a similar fashion as cable, uh, or, you know, cable, meaning direct mounted to the veneer uh, and not a lot of conduit, uh, into the adjacent power source individually. I think that I'm okay from that standpoint.
Should be stretched fairly taut though, not all saggy, right?
We'll, we'll keep it very clean. I think.
Keep it very what?
Keep it very clean and taut against.
Real good. Anything else?
I think I would suggest noting that this is a sort of temporary art installation versus a like permanent um decorative, like lighting installation. Um, because I think that differentiation is kind of important here. Like if you think of holiday lighting that goes up, um, seasonally. So the season for this might be just a couple of years, but is not necessarily an application that is, you know, architectural and meant to be here forever. And I think that's important just because these lights are not, you know, typically the kind of lighting that we would approve in. They're visible. The actual fixture is visible. Um, and so I think that that makes it different than, you know, the lighting that people put over their garage doors.
Further discussion?
I have a question. Why, why is this a lighting fixture that uh, we would normally not approve? Like, why are we not just doing, asking for goose head lights like we do for every other applicant?
These are, I mean, these are serving a goose head light isn't going to be an RGBW controllable, like DMX controlled light.
This is a light that points in a different, different direction than a goose head too.
These are, um, these are an animated lights, programmable um, that are like for placemaking. Even you could not get a fixture like that, that would be an architectural permanent part of a building.
Tell me about the, uh, programming of this light, these lights and what kind of exciting light show we're going to have in this alley.
Hey, you can pro, that was for me, right, Jack?
Yes.
Yes, you can program it, um, however you want. We had a conversation with our public art committee this morning. Um, and each wall would, would look different. So you can also, to your earlier point, point some of them down towards the, the street and some of them on the opposite buildings. So by the mural, we would probably do cool tones, blue, purple, green to kind of accentuate the, the mural that's there. Um, but we can change it, um, however we want to, um, we want it to look artistic, um, and kind of place make that alley. Um, but it's super programmable, um, and we can update it as, as frequently as we need to.
Would you anticipate programming these lights to be animated? That is to change right in front of your eyes? Or more, or are you talking about programmable in the sense that you can pick colors and combinations and then just have a steady light of that hue shining on whatever you want ever to shine it on?
They would change in front of your eyes. So it would be a blue, then to a purple, then to a, you know, a, a different color. Um, you could do that as fast as you want, um, and as intentional as you want. So they, they would turn on every single night at a given time in whatever show we wanted them to show. Similar to like the arches, how the arches would kind of sometimes in the holiday do red and then green and then white. That's similar to what these lights could do as well.
Uh, we can't, we don't allow signs to do that, although these are lights, not signs, but Liesel's, uh, comment that uh, this should be temporary is becoming more and more prescient.
Right. So remember the 711 North High, they have LED color changing lights and we said those are architectural lights, um, that light the architectural features of the building. And those ones are only allowed to change once every 24 hours. So they're not allowed to be animated where. So, they're not allowed to be animated where obviously the Short North arches are animated. So, these are a completely different thing, and I think we have to treat them differently because this is an art installation. And so emphasizing that this is a temporary thing, um, I don't know if it makes sense for it to be reviewed on a regular basis. You know, sort of like the, the murals that stick on the walls are. But it has, I think it somehow has to be differentiated from the, the architectural RGBW lighting.
Other comments?
Uh, my comment is that I'm just not that impressed with the fixture itself. Like, I understand it's not gonna be up forever, but a couple of years is not exactly temporary. Like, temporary sandwich is six months. If this is gonna be up for longer than six months, I prefer to see a more substantial fixture. I think that there are some out there that can change color and be programmable. Um, and I, you know, like, if this is the light that we're going with, then I think it needs some sort of base to, to hide where the wires meet the light, to hi- hide that, like, the, the base structure that's attaching to the mortar, basically. I think it looks kind of messy.
Uh, Sean, any thoughts?
I would, I, I understand the, the conditions and I, I agree with the commissioners in terms of the temporary nature and kind of stressing that fact. Um, you know, Erin has a, has a good point in just in terms of how it's mounted. Um, I, I'm not sure if there's a, an alternate way of mounting this particular fixture in order to try to, you know, enhance the cleaning up of it. Uh, but, um, given it's temporary, I, I may be, um, willing to just go ahead and allow that to, to continue to.
Apple, what's a, what's a, uh, reasonable figure for coming back and renewing it a year?
Um.
Carolyn?
Oh, I think I said, did you, yeah, so I think, um, just to note on Erin's comment, these, um, these lights that were hung up in this picture are kind of examples of how they would be in the mortar. Um, but they, in this picture, is, are attached to, um, a generator because we didn't tap into the electrical just for, so it does look a little bit messier than it will look up on the wall. I think we really wanna bring a lot of light and, um, uh, just make this a cool place because the alley, i- it's been an issue for so long. And I know when we originally came through with the art, a lot of light was, was specified as like being an option. So, I think temporary we can work with, um, as long as that duration is a little bit longer only because of the, the budget and the funds that we're putting into these lights. Um, it would be hard for us to come back in a year, um, after we've invested thousands and thousands of dollars in putting these lights up. Um, but I can, I mean, if there's anything too that, that would make it not temporary that I can explore and see kind of, um, what more you might be interested in to make it a permanent fixture, whether it is just a cleaner fixture, I can do that. Um, unless that temporary period is like, you know, five years, which I, that might not make it temporary. I, I'm not sure.
Well, the temporary, the temporary, the one-year renewal doesn't mean we can't just keep renewing it from year to year.
Yeah.
I think this is a situation that we need to monitor. And, uh, because this is, if it were anywhere else, would be inappropriate for lots of reasons, including the, with the way you've, uh, wired them and everything else. The whole thing speaks temporariness. And if it were anywhere else, the, uh, dancing lights and changing hues would probably be a big problem too. But we understand what you're trying to do with this alley. All right, do we have a motion?
I was just gonna suggest a light like this typically, um, would be mounted to like an arm or a pole or something, like it's intended to be bolted in and movable. So, I don't know if there's a hardware piece or something that could be fabricated that would dress it up a little bit, um, if you wanted it to be a little more permanent. The only, the, the real thing is that a light like this, raw by itself, isn't something we would typically approve on at least a permanent basis.
Okay, I wanted to clarify my comment.
In the animation of it. So, it's, it's, it's more of a, again, it's a uh, technicality, I guess, but, and you're familiar with the technicalities that we're, um, dealing with. But, um, I think either a, a way of dressing it up, you're not gonna find an architectural light that does this. I know this. Um, so I think a way of addressing it either as a temporary installation or to dress it off a bit.
Do we want to have a, uh, Erin, you were trying to get in?
I just wanted to clarify that. I'm very in favor of adding lighting to this and I'm okay with like the exterior conduit and all of that. I just, I'd prefer we treat it as a, a permit structure because I can't see a time when we're going to not want lighting on this alley. And therefore, I think we should approach it with the kind of fixtures that would be permanently installed. Um, and, and I would, this is not the kind of fixture that I would want to continuously approve on an annual basis. So, if it's gonna be, if it's gonna come up every year, then it should just be a permanent fixture.
But somebody else is gonna wanna put it on their building and have their building animated. So, that's the problem. Wood companies is gonna say, why couldn't we have seven eleven North High Street animate a waving American flag or something? You know what I mean? So, that's really the problem.
Yeah, I see, okay.
Do we have a motion? To approve as submitted as a temporary lighting installation renewable every year?
Um, I, I, I will motion to approve as submitted as a temporary installation that has to be renewed every year.
And as submitted includes, uh, all the specifications about how everything is going to be attached to mortar and how the cables are going to be run, right?
Taut.
Right, taut cables and mounted in the mortar.
All right, do we have a second? That's Conyers, I think. All right, do we have any further discussion? All in favor? Oh, no, Moriarity?
Yes.
Yes? Cudheimer?
Yes.
Conyers?
Yes.
Decker? Yes, because this isn't actually painting the brick, which by the way is not temporary, it's permanent. All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
Next.
Okay, next is item fourteen, eight sixty-seven Neal Avenue. The applicant would like to remove decaying bushes and forest trees in the yard, remove three pine trees on the south fence, install two gates at northeast and northwest corners of the backyard to match the existing, add three skylights to the carriage house per submitted drawings. Uh, the applicant did provide dimensioned elevations per commissioned feedback at the business meeting. Victorian Village Guidelines state that skylights placed so that visibility from the street is minimized are appropriate. Um, installation of flat light, that is installation of flat skylights that are nearly flush with the surface of the roof. Staff recommends approving the application as submitted with a tree replacement plan submitted to staff for review and approval prior to the assurance of a certificate.
All right. Thank you. Oh, do we have an applicant?
I think I, sorry, I was muted. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Who's our applicant? Mr. Car- Carson?
Yep, Carson Thrush.
Carson Thrush, do you swear or affirm the testimony you will give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Very well, what have you to add?
Hmm, nothing.
What do you think, commissioners? Erin, what do you think of this?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if we had an arborist look at this, like we did the last submission about moving trees?
Yeah, I submitted an arborist report.
Okay, sorry.
Liesel, what do you think?
Um, yeah, um.
Damn it, excuse me.
Just for the, we're just talking about the landscaping right now.
Yeah, let's talk about the landscaping part A.
Yeah, I think the landscaping is, uh, allowable.
Anybody else have any? Comments on landscaping?
No comments on the landscaping.
And I'm sorry, what did staff want kicked back at?
Staff would like a tree replacement plan.
Very well.
Uh, that is in the PowerPoint. It includes putting Arbor Vitae, uh, as a wall for the air conditioners, uh, in the e- southeast corner of the backyard.
Guys, I'm sorry, I need to jump off.
Bye, Liesel. That's three, okay. Uh, Arbor Vitae.
Arbor Vitae count as a tree?
I don't know.
I don't know either. Also, I can't find the plan diagram with where they're being planted.
Uh, it is slide five of the PowerPoint. Sorry, slide six, slide six, slide six and slide three. Can you go to slide three? Uh, stop. Oh, you, you have the, um, you have the older one. This is the, this is actually the original PowerPoint. I amended it after, uh, hearing you guys' business meeting to give a, a better indication. Do you guys have that updated one? I, I sent it into, um.
It's in there if you scroll to the bottom perhaps.
Is it the updated one? There's the arbor, there's the arborist report.
Yeah, it ends with, uh, the old city arborist.
No, that's not my, um, that's not my most updated one that I, I sent.
How many pages is yours? How many pages should it be? Because it might have gotten added out of order.
Okay, uh, mine is eleven. Now, I did submit two different, uh, PowerPoints. There's the one that includes the skylights, which is on the carriage house. Then there's the one that includes the backyard landscaping.
I will check what we have. We would just wanna make sure that we have a tree replacement plan before issuing a certificate.
If you stay on that page right here, I can describe it a little bit for you. In the, in the right side of that photo, you see some of the air conditioners. Uh, essentially, I'm just putting trees in front of the air conditioner so you can't see them.
Yeah, does staff have an opinion on whether or not an Arbor Vitae is a tree or a shrub?
Yeah, I'm not sure. Does Connie or Kim, can you speak to that?
I'm not familiar with what it is, so I have to call to Connie.
Yeah, I would, I would consider Arbor Vitae to be a shrub, not a tree. I mean, it's, it's generally put up as a, sort of a fencing thing, but it's, it's not a tree.
Right, are we getting rid of all four of these, uh, small trees that we see in this photo?
Yes. Uh, the, the, if it matters, the Arbor Vitae, the particular name of it is Arbor Vitae Emerald Green Tree.
Yeah, no, I know what Arbor Vitae looks like. I don't, I think it's a shrub, not a tree, so I'm not sure that that would count. I, I'm fine with that being used as a screening material for the, um, air conditioning units, but I don't think that that, uh, counts as like replacing in kind, um, for tree removal.
Okay.
Uh, what, so what's gonna happen to all these hedges and everything else in the, in the yard? Does that all go too?
Yeah, that's gonna be removed.
So, you basically nuke what's there to make a flat grassed area and then have these tall pine-like things in front of your air conditioners?
Yep.
So, what we told the last applicant was that, um, you know, you could replace those trees anywhere else in your property. So, potentially could fit one or two on the front yard and two in the backyard, and that might give you enough usable space.
I think, uh, having walked by Carson's house numerous times, I don't see where he's gonna put any more trees in his front yard, which is dominated by a gigantic sycamore.
That's true.
Is that correct? So, if we're looking at tree replacement, it's probably in the backyard. I think we need, uh, some more detail, uh, because in my opinion, we need to replace, if we're gonna take out all this greenery and replace it with a monoculture, we need to talk about adding at least two decent trees to the backyard.
Okay, I, I guess my, I mean, my, my, my thought would be is seven trees, because that's where I'm looking at trying to remove in total. Seven trees is kind of a lot for a backyard, especially when I still have it, there is still a gigantic tree in the backyard as well.
I see four. Where are the other three?
Yeah.
They're gonna be on slide, let me see here. If you look on slide nine.
I'm waiting for the city to pull it up.
That's slide nine on, on this PowerPoint.
Here, 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 here's what I, I can tell you. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, the couple remaining commissioners that are still on with me. Uh, I don't have a real good picture of what you intend to do. You need to see a good plan with some replacement trees. Not necessarily one for one, because I understand you're trying to make some open space and this is filled up with a bunch of little trees that haven't matured yet. But, uh, you need to give us a real good picture of what this is gonna look like with some replacement trees in it.
I, I, uh, respectfully, I, I did. I, I submitted that. Um, this just isn't my most updated PowerPoint.
Sorry, but, uh, due to circumstances beyond our control, we can't see it.
Okay.
Uh, and I can't vote on what I can't see, and, uh, I'm sorry. So, do we have a motion to continue part A?
Motion to continue part A.
Do I have a second? Sean, you have to second it. You have no choice.
Yeah, second it.
Very well, discussion. Uh, Moriarity?
Yes.
Conyers?
Yes.
Decker, yes, it's continued. Uh, and hopefully you can work out with staff so we've got the right stuff to look at next time and can tell. I think you, from our discussion, you know what needs to be addressed. And if your, what staff has now doesn't address it, you need to give it to them. All right, what about these skylights? Three of them, two on south and one on the west.
There's, before we, before we move on, just quickly, and I don't know if, it was that only related to the backyard treescape or landscape elements? Because there's other items outside of that, meaning that there's the gates and things of that nature too that is part of the backyard. So, I just wanna make sure that what our motion was.
Uh, we continue the entire landscaping package. But if we, if there's something, if there's something we can discuss or want to discuss about the gate detail and everything else, or is that something you think can be separated out and approved?
I, my personal.
It seems like it can be separated, so I just didn't know if, if that was, that would help the homeowner, uh, from that standpoint. Because it's like, it's separate, you know, so that's all.
All right, any discussion about the gates and fencing? We have a good idea of what's gonna happen here. I'm looking around for a plan that shows me where the fence is.
It's, um, the, the slide. It's um, the, the slide that we're currently looking at, it shows the northeast corner there and then the northwest corner.
With all the blue stuff. There we go, the bird's eye view.
Yeah, so you see in the yellow there is the highlighted of what I plan on making the addition of. The purple is existing structures. I will say that the uh neighbor's fence, the one that I'm tying into was I think you put it up maybe last month or the month before, so you guys, it should be fairly fresh in your memory.
Is he consented to this?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion about the fence or gate? I can't see with the fence.
Just quickly from that standpoint is, is right now, anything that you're adding, Carson is not tying into their fence, or is it just adjacent to it? It looks like there's a shared kind of a shared four by four from that standpoint. That shared four by four is acceptable to them?
It is, yeah, it is. I talked to him about sharing it. He said he was fine with it. As long as I use the same materials that he used is what, is he wanted to do, and I would want that anyways, cause it looks more. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Is that something like cedar probably looks like it?
Yeah, he used six by six posts and then cedar is what he used, and then he had a cap.
Okay.
So his gate is um kind of squared off, but his is rounded. Those are the only distances I can see.
That is a difference. I thought it was an acceptable because his house is much, it's got a turd, it's got much more round features where I'm an American four square, I'm much more squared off. I thought it was kind of more of an ode to our architectural differences in our houses anyways.
Okay, so I see a uh slice through the fence on the next page. But the fence is composed of is the side plating, your vertical flats?
Yes.
No, that's two by four.
Yeah.
I guess, what do you refer to as side plating?
I don't know. That's what I'm asking you, cause this says six by six posts, cedar panels.
Mm-hmm.
Two by four side plating.
Plating, I see. Sorry, I wasn't reading my own slide. Yes, two by four, yes.
So the cedar panels.
Mm-hmm.
What dimension are the cedar panels?
Uh, the ones that he has out there right now are one by six, but in actual dimensions, that would be five and a half inches by uh three quarters of an inch. That's just, you know, it's.
Okay, so they're one by six cedar boards.
Yes.
Space between them?
Yeah, it looks about a quarter of an inch right now. I'm gonna match it. Maybe an eighth of an inch, probably an eighth of an inch.
It's not in here. Oh, well. Uh, is this enough that we can have a motion to approve it?
Um, there's one more item, Carson, and I, I just noticed that, I'm sorry. It's the four by four with the gate. Unfortunately, when you tie into your fence and you utilize that six by six, that he currently has the the hinges and such were, that gate, his gate will not operate, or his or her gate, I shouldn't say it, I'm sorry, it will not operate. So um if you look at the image, go back uh to probably slide maybe two, and you look at the image to the part left is what I'm, what I'm looking at.
Oh, his, his, his gate will still open to a, a full one uh ninety degrees so he can get in his house. The, if you look at his hinges, you're talking about his rounded gate there, I'm assuming?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so where his hinges are, they don't reach past the halfway point of that six by six post. So where my cedar would tie in, it, it wouldn't infringe on that.
Okay.
So your top and bor- bottom cross members would be, would attach to that above and below his hinges.
Correct.
And then you'd probably leave a little space there uh so he could get to his hinges when you put in your first vertical one by six.
It would be very close. Um, you'd probably have to use uh drill attachment to get to them, but yeah, you could, I'm not looking to make enemies, I'll say that.
Right, right. You're gonna, you're gonna leave him a little space. So, okay, I get it. Anything else?
No, looks good.
Do we wanna make a motion to approve the fence, or do we need more detail?
I make a motion.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Yes, sir, you go ahead.
I just wanna make sure the gate shows one piece of wood, but it's actually one by sixes on the bottom part. Right?
I'm.
Back here, the purple picture, the one beneath that, that says fence detail, says gate detail.
Yeah.
And I can't tell what this is. Looks like a square gate, and then looks like it's got various cross pieces. What's in the bottom of it?
It's two by fours on either side.
What's the, what's the center pan, what's the center bottom panel? Is that one piece or a bunch of?
No, it's, it's, the only one by six is on the very top. Everything else is just paneling and then two by fours.
Well, on the bottom, it shows some big opaque thing inside the two by fours.
Yeah, that's the, that's where the paneling sits between the two two by fours.
Right. Okay, what is this? Is it uh one large piece of cedar? Is it several one by sixes side by side? What is it?
Well, the, the cedar panels are one by sixes, so it's gonna be there, because you're looking at it kind of a that's a, what do you call it? A, a, a crosscut? Uh, you're good, that's gonna be every, you know, six inches, you're gonna have a cedar.
I'm looking next to it, gate detail.
Oh, gate detail, sorry.
I'm trying to figure out what the uh center part of the gate is. You've already explained the fence.
The center part of the gate? Oh, it's uh, oh, and it's opaque? I see what you're saying. Yes, that's, that is also cedar shake. Um, and it's gonna have the same pattern and dimension as the fence does.
Uh, yes, I assume they'll, they'll be butted up against each other.
If you look at the picture of my neighbor's fence, um where he's got that curved kind of a artistic architectural thing, I'm, I'm literally just copying his exact style. I'm just, instead of rounding my top, I'm just making it square.
We just need to call out things because your drawings don't say them.
No problem. I'd rather be.
Are, are we ready for a motion? Or not?
No, we are. I'll let Sean do it.
Okay, a motion to approve that submitted, the, the fence, which is maybe item B. Uh, so item B, a motion to approve the fence that submitted, um with the clarification that um you know, the, the dimensions will, the dimensions and material will match the existing adjacent neighbor's fence. And the gate itself will just be squared off in lieu of round.
Staff, is that gonna do it for you? Based on the discussion that we've had?
I think it should be fine.
Very well, do we have a second?
Second.
Further discussion. All right, roll call, Moriarity.
Yes.
Conyers.
Yes.
Decker, yes, part B passes, part C skylights. Any issues?
Uh, I can, if I might speak into this one just slightly. Uh, the problem is, is uh it's just very dark without the skylights, so. And I also forgot them on the previous uh time I was submitting. But everything, everything else, according to what you guys approved, is exactly the same. The only thing that's different is that I'd, I'd like to have these skylights in the plans. And they're the, they're the Velux skylights. I think you guys are pretty familiar with them.
Yep. They open?
No.
Fixed?
Fixed.
They're the only one that troubles me a little bit is the one that faces the alley, that's all. This is, I think that our previous approval of skylights for maybe the carriage house that was done before was only on the north and south end ends.
I agree with that, Moriarity. Aaron, what do you think?
It looks like there's already a skylight installed in one of the photographs.
That's true. I, when I, I was looking over all the plans and I recognized that I totally missed it. I'm willing to remove it. Obviously, I need to get approval. Um, like I said, it was just an oversight.
Uh, my other comment was I thought that we talked about skylights the last time we discussed the garage. Um, but I'm mistaken in that.
Yeah, so the first rendition before it fell down, I, I did have skylights on it in that place. And when I did the second rendition and when I was getting it approved, I just simply forgot to put them on. So we had approved them way back when, and then I did a, you know, the revision of everything, and then I forgot to put them back on.
Yeah, I think.
Can you clarify the locations of those skylights?
Sorry, you, you guys were at the same time.
I was just gonna say, I think the discussion that I remember having is that, you know, like the, the garage fell down and we wanted it replaced in kind, and the last garage didn't have skylights, and therefore the new garage should not have skylights. That's what I remember talking about.
Yes, after it, after it fell down, there was no discussion of putting the skylights on. I just simply forgot to have them on the plan.
Okay, go ahead, Sean.
No problem, Erin, I apologize. Um, Carson, can you, I, I do recall when the whole, when the, when the original carriage house was being proposed um as going through the modifications of the doors and windows and things of that nature prior to the roof falling down, can you express the two locations that you had skylights approved?
I'd have to look through the plans. I, I don't quite recall. I remember that they were there, but I, I'd have to look through the plans.
Okay, cause I, I'm remembering that there were the north and the south face.
They might have.
Just, just given consistency of what the commission typically tries to accomplish, that's all.
Sure.
Do we wanna have, uh, based on my agreement with Sean, it sounds like there two of the three commissioners are not in favor of the skylight facing the alley, but have no problem with the ones proposed on the south face. Is that right? Maybe three of three, but.
That's, that's my thought, yes.
Do we wanna have a motion to that effect? Part C. Approving the, approving the two.
Sure. Motion to approve item C of application, BB twenty oh seven oh fourteen. Uh, with the uh removal of the skylight on the alley side of the roof garage roof and approval of the two. Sorry, can't find the elevation now.
South.
South side. Thank you.
Do we have a second?
A second. If I don't have a choice.
Otherwise, we can't vote. Okay, all in favor, no, Moriarity, yes or no?
Yes.
Conyers.
Yes.
Decker, yes. Now, the way this has been structured, you really didn't get a vote on your south, your, I'm sorry, what's facing skylight. You want one, or do you want to uh I suppose come back with something else, or what do you wanna do about that?
I amend my west-facing skylight to be a mirror image just on the east side. Exact same measurements, it's a perfect square.
Or, I don't know, is that what we can do right now?
I don't know, staff? We approved a skylight on the east side in the low, uh mirror image location. Could you craft a certificate?
I think I can. I don't know if there'd be a reason or a rule that would let me not be allowed to do that. Uh, we'll hear if any other staff speaks up about that.
Is there any objection, uh, is there, do any of the other commissioners have an objection since it would not face the alley and not be visible from the?
Staff would want, like, in drawings, just what was gonna happen, but otherwise, it seems like we should be able to just announce.
So the motion should be contingent on uh submitting drawings to establish the exact dimension and location. Got it?
Great.
Okay, motion to approve a skylight at eight sixty-seven Neal Avenue on the east side elevation of the garage. Uh, pending staff approval of drawings to be similar but mirror image of the currently submitted application.
A mirror image of the west-facing skylight on the current application.
Skylight, correct, thank you.
In dimension and location. All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
And this is part D. All right, Moriarity.
Yes.
Conyers.
Yes.
Decker, yes. All right, having no further business. Carson, you're dismissed. Have a good day.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, we've got twelve minutes for the highlight of the evening. I don't know what we can do with it.
Yes, so we have twenty-three West Second, which is um proposed demolition of a banquet addition and proposed new seven stro- story mixed-use building. This was here previously as conceptual. It initially came in uh as an action item. But following the June twenty-fourth business meeting, there have been some changes. The applicant uh referred has said that they would like to request a conceptual review of the overall design at this time. Um, so let's see, what should we? So staff would recommend approval of massing and overall design as a conceptual approval. But then, and recommends approval of variances. And then all design details, including materials, color and fixtures, should return for further review at an upcoming hearing. So this project includes um the new construction of the mixed-use building, a two-level parking deck. Um, they've included some material information. Um, there's some brick relief information. Uh, they've recessed the entryways of the townhomes, and they've designated an area to be used for drop-off and move-in. So lots of things have changed since last month, but um at the business meeting, commissioners had comments about the finishes of all of the materials, um such as a spreadsheet that has information for every material. You'd like to know about garage ventilation, how electricity would be run, washer dryer vents, locations, cut sheets for windows, doors and lights. So these are all the things that uh the applicant is now looking at conceptually. And then we'd like um a vote on the variances, if that's clear. Um, and then there are some speakers as well.
All right, who are our speakers?
So first I have Bill Wood.
Bill, are you there?
I'll find him.
Uh, I see his pa- I see his face. Lisa, are you a speaker?
I think so.
Why don't we take you next? Take you now.
I put away my notes. I didn't think we were gonna do this tonight.
Well, one of the woods.
I guess I'm, I guess I'm confused as to what you're voting on tonight, and if only three.
Well, we aren't voting on anything yet. We don't have a motion. And my own view is that uh we are, there are only three of us left, and I'm not prepared to vote on anything, but.
Okay, can I just share some information?
You may.
I really think.
You've got three minutes.
Okay, they need a sun study, they need a traffic study, because that's the one alley that goes into second and price, and they're gonna have that cut off. Um, cause that is an ingress, ingress and egress twenty-four seven. There's some other information I wanted to share with you about the property at. Um, 'cause that is an ingress, ingress and egress twenty-four seven, there's some other information I wanted to share with you about the property at twenty-three. Um, the EPA is aware of that building, that it has in excess of asbestos, and that the chimney in the back is a bird sanctuary. Um, my other concern is there's been no mention of the property at thirty-seven Second Avenue.
All right. Any other?
Any plans for them to do anything with it?
I'm sorry, Lisa, are you done?
I guess, I mean, it's sort of just too bad, too big, too into the neighborhood, too white, everything else that I don't like about it.
Thank you. Is Bill, uh, Bill awake now?
He said you mute, you muted him, but you can unmute.
Somebody unmute Bill. Bill, we're looking at your ceiling, there you are.
Yeah, I'm going back to my back.
Time's wasting, we'll never hear from anybody by seven o'clock, go. Do you swear or affirm, uh, your comments, or is it truth, the whole truth and nothing but?
I do.
Very well.
Yeah.
All right, even though you've gone much longer than the, uh, email that, that, uh, that we got from, uh, the, I'm not sure which lady she was, um, that it was gonna end at six, as far as twenty-three, as far as twenty-three, well, the, the, the project is called twenty-three West Second Avenue. However, they are not, and have not given you any proposed work for the address twenty-three West Second Avenue, which is the old Brinker Building, which is a, a historic building. They have owned it for three and a half years and have not done anything to it, there have been, in the last twelve months, three major vagrant eliminations from the building, one had ten police cars, and they evicted sixteen people. Another had police come, and they refused to enter the building until the dog squad, the canine squad come, came, because they were afraid of going in the building. This is what we have in the neighborhood next to us, they have done nothing on that building, they have done nothing to preserve it, it's an eyesore in the neighborhood, and and you guys have to, before you approve the huge development, you have to make sure that inside that approval, there's work to be done simultaneously on twenty-three West Second and also thirty-seven West Second. On thirty-seven West Second, they have had code violations, which they had to take care of, and all they did was put a slap of coat of paint, and the building is still falling apart, you guys have got to have that be one development in which, at the same time as they build the large development, that they work on the Brinker Building at twenty-three West Second and the house at thirty-seven West Second Avenue, um.
Thank you.
My three minutes up?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I don't know. I thought, I detected a comma.
I, I have a comma, but, um, I've just another, another quick thing, you guys are an architectural commission, and in the past couple of years, you have approved at North High and Fourth, a beautiful development, you have approved on Price, right across the street from where this development will be, a beautiful brick development, on Park Avenue, Wood did a magnificent job on a development. Do your job, you're an architectural commission, make them do something that's appropriate for the neighborhood, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill, do we have any more public comments, and I forgot to even deal with the applicant, which I intend to do before we leave.
There's two more, um, third is Kathy Reinhardt, and it's six fifty-seven, so three minutes from now.
Hi. I agree with what my neighbors have already said, um, I'm still very concerned that this is off of High Street, and it's more of a High Street type of building. Um, size and mass still bothers me too, I did wanna put in the point, which I think Mr. Decker's already said that voting, if there's any kind of vote tonight with only three commissioners, I don't think that's appropriate. Um, but those are my main concerns, is the materials of the building and it not fitting in the neighborhood. I'm done.
Thank you, Kathy, anybody else, who else is out there?
Ross, right, Ross?
Yeah, um, on the, on the picture from the Price Avenue side of the building with the, they uh, the telephony companies have put up a five G tower in front of that, so, I don't believe that's reflected in any of your reviews, as well as that five G tower intrudes within the property, so their request of a zero setback is already not valid, because the tower is about two and a half, three feet inside of the sidewalk. So, everything that we're looking at conceptually is skewed off, because this tower is already encroaching on all the pictures and everything that you're seeing.
Is that it, Ross? Yes, all right, let's have the applicants, uh, who's there?
Mr. Chairman, it's Mike Shannon.
Hi, Mike, are you representing the applicant?
Good evening, sir, yes.
Good evening, what are we gonna do about this, we've got no time left, are you going to request a special meeting?
Yes, I solemnly swear that I solemnly swear, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, uh, I find myself agreeing with you one hundred percent, uh, that it would not be appropriate to conduct the, uh, vote this evening, and I would respectfully request a special meeting for the reasons, uh, you were, I think, about to state. And, uh, we appreciate the accommodation, and, uh, the fact that you went an hour past what other, um, architectural review commissions are doing speaks to your dedication to the process, and we'd respectfully request a special meeting at your earliest convenience.
Thank you, bylaws, uh, generally require three commissioners to agree on a special meeting, and there are three of us left, do we agree?
Yes.
Sean? All right, staff, you need to set that up, please, and check with everybody, see when we can do it. Uh, there are, I happen to agree with, uh, the idea that both a demolition and the proposed rehab of the remaining structures need to be addressed in a lot more detail, we don't know how the demolition would be, uh, finished out, what would happen to the rear of the building, exactly where the cut would be, or anything else, and I still have an issue with the corners of the building and with the brick pasted on to the third and fourth stories at the corner, which looks like bricks pasted on to a foreign, uh, part of the building as opposed to an extension of the bottom two stories, that's a big problem, any other comments?
Understood, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, thank you for waiting so long, were you the, uh, one who was left, uh, with the assignment to watch this to its bitter end? Or are there others here with you who have shared your pain?
There's others on, there's others on, thank you. Yes, they're all here, they're all here.
Okay, well, hello, everybody, thank you for your patience, uh, we have one more, uh, deal with the election of officers, we have insufficient people to consider that, maybe we can take it up at the special meeting or a business meeting, do we have a motion? Yes.
I do wanna know, the letter that Mark Travilla sent out today said you have to run pa- the special meetings past Jamie before committing to them, so we're going to need his approval for it as well.
Uh, the special meetings, I have to go through Mark?
No, you have to go through Jamie to approve it.
Fine. Uh, if we, if we have no city support, we have no meeting.
One last item on the agenda, is there one last old business item on the agenda before we can depart?
Oh, yes, there is, I'm very, very sorry, we need to look at this, is anybody left for the, uh?
The old business is gonna be moved to next month's meeting, they've requested not have that, but thank you.
That was changed to the door for Sullivan's project? Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm, I'm representing that applicant as well, and we would like to table that till next month.
Very well, do we have a motion to continue?
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, uh, I'll take yours as a second, Sean, more a rarity.
Yes.
Conyers.
Yes.
Decker, yes, continued. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned, thank you all for your patience, appreciate it very much, we'll wait here from staff. Good night.
Good job, Sarah.
Good night, everybody.
Good job, Sarah.
Bye, guys.
Hey, Jacqueline, can you, do, do you have the power to stop the recording on that?
Oh, uh, let me double.
'Cause I, it got, it kicked me off yet again, and, um, I can't get back on, so.
Okay, let me see if I can do this.
Okay, if, if not, then.
I'll just record forever.
You guys can, no, stuff's going on.
Um, it just gives me the option to save, I don't think I have the option.
Hang on, okay, okay, hang on a second. Yeah, this just completely died on me.
Trouble the whole time, and I see there's three of you now.
Yeah, that's where we're at. Oh, gosh. All right, let me try again.
Now, let's say if the Webex closes, would it automatically save within the Webex file the recording?
Yeah, I just, um, I think we need to stop the recording first, I'm not sure if, like.